They relate to you.
Councilwoman Martinez also says the city is partnering with as many schools as possible to expand STEM programs in communities of color. The city and the L.A. Kings hockey team are building a first-of-its-kind ice rink together in Reseda. Anna Marcos has more on Councilmember Bob Blumenfield's plan to bring the first year-round public ice facility to Los Angeles.
Skating dreams of all sorts could soon become reality for kids in Reseda and the Valley, thanks to Councilmember Bob Blumenfield and hockey Hall of Famer and L.A. Kings president, Luke Robitaille. The two have signed an agreement to build the Reseda Ice Rink, the city's first year-round public ice facility.
Day in and day out, it's going to be used by kids in leagues, by people who want to figure skate and practice their figure skating, by even the curling team.
We love the game of hockey, and to have another opportunity, a bigger opportunity, to share the game that we love so much, the opportunity of kids skating, you know, it's not just about hockey. We're going to have a lot of figure skaters going there, a lot of public sessions.
Everything we do today, from, you know, building youth hockey in China, to playing games in Utah, to building ice rinks in the Valley, is about growing the game.
Blumenfield found the funds through Prop K approved by voters in the '90s. Still, it wasn't enough to build a first-class $26 million rink.
I call Wreckin' Parks, "Hey, what can we do with $3.9 million?" And at the end of the day, they could build a couple of ice cubes, that's about it.
He approached the Kings and said, "I want to build a rink, and I have money." They said, "Great." And then he said, "Oh, by the way, I have $3 million, and it costs 26."
Blumenfield kept calling. Now, years later, he finally has the money and a building site on Sherman Way in Reseda. For him, it's part of a larger plan.
The idea is to transform that area with catalytic development and making Sherman Way from what it is right now, which is a street with great bones, but that has been suffering into a great street in Los Angeles.
This is one of several practice rinks at the Toyota Sports Center in El Segundo, but the Reseda Rink will be even larger than this. It will be a professional, regulation-sized rink.
In other words, a rink like the Toyota Center's biggest rink where the L.A. Kings play.
It's going to bring amazing opportunities for a lot of youth who would have otherwise never had an opportunity to skate or participated in hockey.
Groundbreaking could begin as early as next year.
The ice rink will be owned by the city, but will be managed by the L.A. Kings. The project is part of Councilmember Blumenfield's initiative, Reseda Rising. Police dramas have long been a staple in Hollywood, and many of those who've pursued policing as a career credit the early impact of such shows. We take you to Ten Four Day, a unique car show that salutes your favorite cinematic cop cars.
Film and TV cop cars that influenced generations of young people to pursue careers in law enforcement get set to hit the streets.
This, of course, is Ten Four Day, '10 being October 4th. It's also CB slang for acknowledgement between law enforcement officers when they're in their squad cars. It's a day to pay homage to those officers who keep our city safe.
The annual cop car parade through Hollywood was co-founded by Gary Goltz and Tom Labonge, sparked by their childhood obsession with the '50s series Highway Patrol.
Those of your audience who are baby boomers, and in my generation, clearly know that Rodrick Crawford, the star of Highway Patrol, was often seen leaning over his '55 Buick, screaming into the mic, "Ten four, ten four, ten four, roadblocks, roadblocks everywhere, move, 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 move."
Show Rodrick Crawford was shot all over Los Angeles, from Griffith Park, Atwater Village, Las Feliz, the old Glendale train station, but also the message of safety.
Here's to our public safety personnel and their heroes on the big and small screens.
And my personal favorite, Kit from Knight Rider. This year also marked the 50th anniversary of the TV show Adam 12, credited for influencing a lot of young people to join the LAPD. Have you ever collected anything or know someone who does? Well, then you know each collection has a story to tell, and that's the focus of a new exhibit at L.A.'s Central Library. Rasha Goel takes us on a tour of 21 collections.
It's the latest exhibit at the Central Library in downtown Los Angeles, and one that uncovers the art of storytelling through 21 diverse collections. 21 collections, every object has a story, takes us through the unique stories that are revealed through the accumulation of everyday seemingly objects.
It's really a celebration of the storytelling power of things that people collect, that this idea that when people bring things together, they're giving them a new life. We wanted to highlight the role of the public library as an important collecting institution in our society.
LaRue visited over 600 institutions to find these 21 collections. One of the things you won't miss is the life-size walnut elephant, built entirely out of walnuts. This elephant became symbolic of L.A. and toured internationally for at least 30 years.
This is actually a recreation of a historic exhibition that was launched by the L.A. Chamber of Commerce way back in 1893 for the Chicago World's Fair.
There is so much to see here, but one of my favorites is typewriters, which features the collection of Tom Hanks' typewriters. Now, did you know that he owns 300, of which seven are being featured here? And these were used as inspiration for his first book titled Uncommon Type. Another collection is comprised of the dioramas from the African-American Museum of Miniatures that share stories of Black history and culture.
Which is a project by an artist named Karen Collins. And she was a schoolteacher, she still lives in Compton with her family, and in the early 1990s, her oldest son, Eddie, was sentenced to 167 years in prison on gang-related charges. And she was, became very depressed and was looking for a new direction in her life. So, as a teacher, she had observed that many of the stories of African-Americans were not being taught, not being preserved in traditional educational outlets. And so she took it upon herself to create these scenes of history in these shadow box dioramas, to be able to share these proud moments, as well as the struggles on the path to freedom and equality within the Black community and the greater American community.
People collect so many things, but candy wrappers is not something I would have necessarily thought of. And in this unique collection, the wrappers date all the way back to the 1930s.
This is a collection by a woman named Darlene Lacy, and when she was growing up in Southern California in the 1970s, she saw all her older friends had collections of things like beer bottles, and she thought that was very cool and wanted to create a collection of her own. But all she could afford at that time was candy. And so she started with a piece called Nice Mice, I think it was some kind of marshmallow candy. She liked the box, she didn't think it would be around forever, and it has grown since then.
From pencils to pictures, bird's eggs to straw horses, I can bet there's something that will pique your interest. In fact, I can say these truly are 21 unique collections that will get your mind wondering about how and why we collect things.
And you can see that giant walnut elephant for yourself. 21 collections will be featured at the Central Library until January 27 of 2019. Visit lfla.org/21collections for more info. Being underage didn't stop one woman from joining the LAPD. In fact, thanks to a new city program, she got paid experience to start her career at LAPD.
It's graduation day for a new breed of LAPD cop. That's Officer Mariah Delgado, the first officer hired by LAPD even before she was old enough to join the academy through a program called Pledge to Patrol.
And it was awesome, because by the time I got into the academy, I had the head start, and I kind of, nothing was really new, everything I kind of had seen or heard about. So it was an awesome jumpstart for everything in the academy.
Let's go back a year ago. Mayor Eric Garcetti launched the first Pledge to Patrol class. The program allows high school graduates too young to join LAPD to work the front desk, take crime reports, and perform minor evidence collection, and with pay, up to 20 bucks an hour. Delgado worked at LAPD's Rampart Station.
Even though she didn't carry the same badge, it was still her job already to protect the citizen. Starting Sunday, Mariah's heading back to Rampart, but this time as a Los Angeles Police Department officer.
Pledge to Patrol is also called the Associate Community Officer Program, or A-COP. It gives aspiring officers real-world experience before they turn 21. That's the cutoff age for joining the academy. A-Cops can also pursue college degrees on the side.
We're looking forward to having many more go into the academy. We have several that are currently processing, because they became age-eligible while being an A-Cop.
I'm the second generation in my family of police officers, and it's awesome. I can't wait to go on with my career and start young.
To qualify, A-Cops must have previously served in the cadets or other LAPD youth programs. The mayor says the hiring process will prioritize diversity and women. Well, for decades, it's been a wellspring of creativity in South L.A. Now Watts Towers becomes an even more creative place, as residents mark the 42nd Annual Watts Towers Jazz Festival and the unveiling of a new statue.
It was a bigger celebration than usual at the Watts Towers Jazz Festival, as residents got a peek at a statue of the man who made these Watts Towers a reality back in 1954. Simon Rodia's diminutive image now becomes a permanent part of the iconic landmark.
The size of Simon Rodia was always a question as to how tall he was. So this information was taken from an actual artifact that was on the Watts Towers that he was standing next to. He's actually 5'2". For years, people thought he was 4'11".
We wanted our community to see this man. Many people thought he was Black, but he was Italian, an Italian immigrant. So we want to put other of our mentors and elders on the campus, so our young people can see where their heritage comes from.
Rodia worked on the Watts Towers for 33 years before finishing, and it's no wonder it took him so long when you look at the raw materials he used.
He was one of our leaders in recycling before recycling was popular. That's what Simon did. There's glass and shells and ceramics and all of that in the towers that were recycled.
While some came to size Rodia up and take selfies, others came to enjoy all that jazz. And still others came for the clothes, the crafts, and the food.
So it brings together Simon's past, where he came from, Italy. It brings together what he's done, and then the current artists and residents or arts, things that we do here.
Artist sculptor Charles Dixon sums up the community spirit.
So I've learned that when I do a piece, I empower the community with it, and it belongs to a community.
Watts Towers also has an art center with artists and residents to inspire people to create for themselves and the community.
Did you know Watts Towers offers free guided tours around the iconic art center? Well, for more info, check out wattstowers.org/tours. No moving cars for miles, just pedestrians, cyclists, skateboarders, and music. October Cicluvia honored the 100th anniversary of the L.A. Philharmonic. We take you to the kickoff, which set the tone for the entire day.
Before all the cycling, skating, and walking, the Car Free Street Fair, known as Cicluvia, kicked off on a high note. Outside Disney Concert Hall, Gustavo Dudamel, the L.A. Philharmonic music director, led a youth orchestra to celebrate a century of the L.A. Philharmonic.
It's a great way to pay homage to all the people, the community, to celebrate with them with music, having fun, you know, breathing, enjoying this beautiful city, so it's great.
And they're off. No cars to worry about for miles, through Grand Avenue, MacArthur Park, Koreatown, and Hollywood, with live musical performances set up as pit stops throughout the entire route.
And the day is going to end at the Hollywood Bowl with a performance by the L.A. Phil. So it's a typical Cicluvia in that there is a route of several miles, it's about an eight-mile route, and the fact that it goes through the heart of my district, the 13th, makes it extra special for me.
Hollywood Councilman Mitch O'Farrell, among the thousands of people excited to be here.
Hello!
If you missed it, you missed out.
Just want to do a shout-out to all my friends and family out there. They should be here right now, I'm missing you all.
The good news is, the next Cicluvia is coming up soon, on Sunday, December 2nd.
The next Cicluvia on December 2nd will roll through Chinatown, downtown Los Angeles, and Boyle Heights. More info at cicluvia.org. It's a festival that attracts big names in Latin, jazz, and pop music. Anna Marcos takes us on a whirl around the dance floor at the 5th Annual Jazz and Music Festival in East L.A.
It was just another great reason to have a good time. The annual Latin and Jazz Festival brought out a little of the habanera in all of us. Councilmember Gil Sadio, who started it all, even dressed for the part in a habanera shirt. He says Latin jazz is a unique American tradition.
The Latin side obviously has a rich history, Afro-Latin history, and then the American side comes from the jazz side, and so that convergence that took place in about the '40s has created a unique art form.
So how do people feel about Sadio's free two-day gift to the community?
Coming every year is a sense of pride. I love knowing that someone that came from my East L.A. roots managed to be this successful, and then does this for his community. This is wonderful.
I'm enjoying this great music. I've been looking forward to it the whole week, relaxing here with my wife.
And it sure did look like everyone was enjoying themselves. Okay, technically, that doesn't look like Latin dance, but who's checking?
I think it's so great to get the community together. It's just great, fantastic. Applause to the people who put this together.
And Latin/jazzy/American art? Sure, why not? We get the feeling a lot of these people will be back again next year, whether it's for the cake, the dancing, or both.
This year, the festival devoted a day for an all-women lineup of performers, featuring local favorite, Celine Amos. L.A. Goes Pink for Breast Cancer Awareness, We Get All Together as One at the 45th Annual L.A. Korean Festival, and the city breaks ground on a new 50-acre park in Puerto Ranch. All these stories in City View. Councilmember Gil Sadio partnered with the American Cancer Society, Susan G. Coleman Los Angeles, and the Breast Cancer Foundation's L.A. Goes Pink campaign to kick off Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of L.A., in honor of his late wife, Ruby Sadio, whom he lost to breast cancer in 2002. As part of the hashtag #PinkLA campaign, L.A. City Hall, along with several landmark buildings, were lit up in pink.
Breast cancer impacts one out of eight women, their families, their children, their parents, their spouses, all their loved ones, and I know that experience intimately.
The 45th Los Angeles Korean Festival was held recently at Seoul International Park. The theme was "All Together as One." The festival featured authentic food, unique programs, and various performances that spread awareness of Korean beauty and traditional culture throughout the city of Los Angeles. Councilmember Mitch Englander broke ground on a new 50-acre park in Puerto Ranch. Bloom Park, named after two San Fernando Valley residents, will have panoramic views of the San Fernando Valley and surrounding mountains, and will feature modern amenities...
We're building a pavilion where we're going to have live music for the community on the weekends. We're going to have splash pads, and bocce ball courts, and picnic areas, and play areas. It's just going to be incredible.
Thanks to a partnership between the city and the L.A. Clippers, local kids will see 345 renovated basketball courts in all parts of Los Angeles. We take you to the grand opening of the first Clippers Community Court at Normandy Rec Center in South L.A.
A pop and some confetti, and this basketball court is now officially a Clippers Community Court. The L.A. Clippers paid for the new floors, the basketball hoops and headboards, and the scoreboard, and that goes for the courts both inside and outside at the Normandy Rec Center. Kids at this Clippers Basketball Clinic were excited.
Anyone that ever wants to learn how to play basketball, they could come here and learn how to play.
Why is it good to learn basketball?
Because then you're doing exercise, you're exercising your hands.
Yep, it's really good, you get stronger.
But that's not all. The L.A. Clippers have donated a whopping $10 million to rehab 345 basketball courts. That's every indoor and outdoor court in L.A.'s Department of Recreation and Parks.
Our mayor has a big vision for this city, for a future where every child in this region has a safe place to play. And we know that sometimes leveling the playing field means just providing one in the first place.
Reach for things you think you will never hold in this world, because every so often, you actually do get to grab that. We reached beyond our grasp, or what we thought was our grasp. We wanted to fix up a few gyms, and now every single gym and every single outdoor court in Los Angeles will be the best anywhere in the world.
Basketball and team sports are very important to the development of young people. They learn goal-setting, they learn teamwork, they learn collaboration, they learn what it means to win, and what it means to lose, and how to be both a good winner and a good loser. And those are the skills that will make you successful in life.
It matters a huge deal to the youth that are using these courts when they come in. It's something in the families that they can be proud of. It's fresh, it's new.
The L.A. Clippers mascot's athletic feats helped provide a festive atmosphere. Meanwhile, Clippers guard Lou Williams had a message for the kids.
You know, to the young people in the room, I hope you guys understand how important this is, and how meaningful it is for them to do this for you guys. Take advantage of the opportunity, take advantage of the facilities.
Soon, these Clippers Community Court logos will be popping up at every basketball court in L.A.'s parks, and with them, a chance to be inspired to succeed, and a chance to play ball.
Many of basketball's greats credit community courts like these for helping them hone their skills. You never know, maybe one of these courts will help a young boy or girl get their start towards the 2028 Olympics here in L.A. We'll, of course, keep you posted. It's that time again for some Halloween fun at Boo at the Zoo. Enjoy the ultimate Oktoberfest celebration in Pershing Square, and a barbecue competition among firefighters heats up. All this and this week's Things to Do. Boo at the L.A. Zoo invites you to feed your imagination with skin-crawling fun and spooktacular learning throughout the entire month of October. Weekend activities include up-close encounters and demonstrations with the zoo's most fearsome, frightening, and misunderstood residents, along with fun animal feedings. Plant eaters will relish creature treats such as pumpkins, while carnivores will devour their favorite fare, carcasses and bones during fearsome feedings. Pumpkin carving demonstrations, a spooky stroll where you can enjoy Halloween activities, mini pumpkin patch, and capture frightfully good snaps at the many beautiful photo ops along the way. So make your way to the L.A. Zoo. All the fun takes place throughout the month of October. The 3rd Annual Oktoberfest is coming to Pershing Square in downtown L.A. this fall. Spend the weekend living it up during this fun cultural event. Local beers from L.A. and authentic German ales will be available to taste or buy, along with sausages, pretzels, and of course, live music and dancing. The weekend is the perfect chance to celebrate with a cold brew and a great group of friends. So come enjoy everything Oktoberfest has to offer. The fun takes place on Saturday, October 20th, at Pershing Square. The Fire it Up BBQ competition is back, with firefighters competing for the title of Best BBQ. There is free admission featuring a live band, DJ vendors, barbecue tastings, VIP packages, celebrity judges, and activities for kids. Fire it Up is a fundraising partnership between two nonprofits that serve and honor the firefighting community. Proceeds will benefit Fire Family Foundation and the African-American Firefighter Museum. The competition takes place October 20th, from 12 to 4 p.m. at the firefighters' first credit union in Eagle Rock. And that's a look at some things to do. And that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane. From all of us here at L.A. this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and check out our newest social media videos, L.A. This Minute. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week. This Week."
Okay, good morning, everyone, and welcome to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. Today is Wednesday, October 17th, and this council meets Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonn, and Buscayino, Sidio, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Luis, our Correttes, Cricory, Martinez, Oferro, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, ten members present in the court. Madam President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes?
Moved by Mr. Oferro, second by Mr. Correttes.
Next, our commensary resolutions for approval?
Okay, moved by Mr. Bonn, and second by Mr. Bloomingfield, next?
Madam President, items one through four are items which public hearings have been held. Item 3A through C are budget finance reports that are submitted without recommendation. It's requested that these motions are required for 3A through C, so they should be held special, Madam President.
Okay, members, do you have any specials on these items? Seeing none? Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Thank you.
Next, Madam President, item number five is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, those items are now before us, and we have cards on these items, correct?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay, let's go ahead. What's next?
That brings council back to presentations, items called special or general public comment.
Mr. Price, I believe you have a presentation this morning.
Thank you, Madam President. Members, it gives me great pleasure to recognize the South Central Los Angeles Ministry Project as they celebrate 25 years of service to South L.A. families. Let's give them a hand. Their work has been vital to ensuring the success and well-being of women and children in the New Ninth. Joining us today is Deanna Pinto, Executive Director, and who was a Shiro of us of our CD9 last year, Nanette Ayala, the Development Director, and Sister Kathy Garcia from Sacred Heart of Mary. Her order was one of the original founders of this outstanding organization. South Central Lamp was founded by eight congregations of Catholic women who canvassed South L.A. in the wake of the 1992 riots to see how they could support the devastated neighborhoods. What they found was a huge community of migrant mothers who didn't understand the public school system or how to support their children's educational development. In response, Southern California Lamp opened its doors in 1993 to assist those vulnerable women and has since guided, been guided by the mission to provide a supportive, nurturing environment for economically poor women and their families. Today, South Central Lamp offers free child, early childhood education for children ages zero to five, parenting education, English as a second language, parent-child interactive literacy activities, and family advocacy to underserved women and their families. South Central Lamp has truly impacted the lives of many families in the New Ninth and will continue to do so for years to come. We want to congratulate them on their efforts and thank them for all that they are doing. And at this time, I'd like to give the Executive Director an opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you so much for this honor. I am just so privileged to be part of this milestone, in all honesty. I always share with people that the families that we serve remind me very much of my mom, and I get the opportunity to be there with them every day. And the children really remind me of me, so I really think that this agency is an incredible agency. I've had the privilege of being there for almost 10 years, and every day is different, but you see the empowerment of the families and the children. And in the end, that's one of the things that's going to change our community: strong women, strong mothers foster strong children. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
Well, on behalf of a grateful community, we offer this resolution for the South Central Los Angeles Ministry Project.
Thank you.
Want to thank you for your years of service and look forward to many more years of collaboration.
Mr. Rue, I believe you have some very special guests here from the San Fernando Valley that just joined us.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. And colleagues, I'd like to introduce the students of Sherman Oaks Charter Elementary.
Mr. Herman, this is your first and final warning for the day. Can you please come forward? I know we have a presentation that we, item number five, but I'd like them to wave to the cameras so you can see yourselves on TV.
Look, you guys are on TV.
Wave.
Great. This is not their first year here. Actually, well, this is their first year here, but Sherman Oaks Charter, Sherman Oaks Charter Elementary has been here for several years now, and their teacher, Robin Arnold, who also, I know, is a good friend of yours-
Yes, hi, Robin. Hi, Mrs. Arnold.
Has brought her students to City Hall every year for the past seven years, so that students may witness government in action, meet the local elected officials, and visit this historic building. Ms. Arnold was also the recipient of the Wonder Woman of the Fourth a few years ago, and was recently named Teacher of the Year from the Walk of Hearts Foundation. Let's give her a round of applause. Ms. Arnold is also here with her colleague Christina Blue Down, who was also recognized as Teacher of the Year from L.A. Together, this dynamic duo has worked to teach their students about how local government works. The goal for all their students is to learn how to create change on a local level. The students here have researched all 15 districts, and will be delivering their research later today to each and every one of our offices. It is important that the young generation learn how our government works, so that when they grow up, they can be that change. And look at everyone, and look in the camera, guys, you're going to be on TV. Say hello for your parents, and later today. And you are the future leaders of Los Angeles. Thank you for visiting City Hall, and I'll see you guys in a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Bonn.
Thank you, Madam President. Also have some schoolchildren here from the 11th District. Could the kids from Kentwood Elementary School, 3rd grade, stand up? Let's get the kid, can we get the camera on them?
Let's get the camera one more time. There we go.
Apparently, it's fit as cloud, fit as. So they're here with Ms. Kim and Ms. Dix. Enjoy your time.
Thank you very much for being here. Thank you, Mr. Bonn. We're going to move on to item number five.
Madam President, item number five has cards. Would you, would the council like to entertain the cards now?
We're going to go ahead and take them later. We're going to go ahead and ask our guests, who are here from the Chamber of Commerce, our President and CEO, Maria Salinas, who please come to the table, and the rest of Good morning, and congratulations on your new positions. Great to see you here.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. We're so excited to be here. Madam President and members of the City Council, I am Maria Salinas, the new President and CEO of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the chamber, thank you for having us here in council during access City Hall to present our ninth annual City Council District Economic Report. I'd like to introduce the delegation that has joined me this morning. Jerry Newman, the chamber's first Vice Chair and Chair of the Board in 2019, who's here on behalf of our Board Chair, Michelle Carrick, who unfortunately could not join us. Jerry's a partner at DLP Piper and has played a leading role in the Business Leaders Task Force, the chamber's collaboration with the United Way to address our homelessness crisis. Jessica Duboff, the chamber's Vice President for Public Policy and Business Advocacy. She's served in this important role for three years and is the leading advocate here in City Hall. Chris Thornburg, founder of Beacon Economics, a leading economist who you will hear from in just a few moments. And his associate, who is here with us as well, welcome. Eric.
Tanner.
Tanner. Tanner, welcome, Tanner. As the new President and CEO of the chamber, I have been in this role for just under three months. And during that time, I've had the pleasure of meeting several of you and others that I've gotten to know very recently. I'd like to especially thank council members Martinez and Rodriguez for welcoming me here at City Hall with the Hispanic Heritage Highlight. Thank you so much. I'd like to also thank Council Member Price, who invited me out to the New Ninth to really get to know the Shiro's in your community, so thank you so much. A little about me, I have a business background, having been an entrepreneur and a small business owner, a former corporate executive, and a founding organizer of a community bank that provided access to capital here in the small business community in the city of Los Angeles. I have a long history of civic and community engagement. But today, I am before you as the new leader of the chamber and the face of the business community. We are the second-largest regional chamber in the country and the largest in the state and in the Los Angeles region. In my short tenure, I've represented the chamber internationally, across this country, and statewide. I understand the importance of a strong chamber, a strong advocate for business, and a strong partner with policymakers like yourselves. Over the course of our 130 years as the voice of business in Los Angeles, the chamber has spearheaded efforts to shape our city into a global leader across a range of industries and issues. Today, we understand that our economy is changing with the advent of technology and changes in the consumption and mobility habits of our people. The chamber is ready to be at the forefront, leading the business community in this complex and diverse landscape, for those sole purposes of growing the economic engine that thrives here in Los Angeles. To that end, our goal is to build upon the rich history and to amplify a consolidated voice of the entire business community here in the area, to expand our leadership role in shaping our region for the benefit of everyone that calls Los Angeles its home. As community advocates, we represent the interests of Angelinos, make no mistake of that, from small businesses and entrepreneurs to our largest employers and economic drivers. We want to ensure that important decisions that policymakers like yourselves are making every day, that they have the insight from the business community. We can provide that to you. We can be that resource for you. I've spent much of my first three months in this role, traveling the region, meeting with our- with our stakeholders, from those members that are small businesses to large corporations that I mentioned, our strategic partners. The businesses in L.A. contribute significantly to the economic vitality of this city. Make no mistake, they are strategic thinkers. They are global in their outlook. And they think about this Los Angeles area and wanting to understand, how can they grow? How can they expand? When they are charting their path, they're looking at the entire ecosystem, including the city's business climate. That means that they're studying our business environment, including policy decisions that are made in these chambers. And those decisions affect our economy here. We need those businesses that are evaluating Los Angeles to not only start here, but to also grow and to mature here in this city. And we need to be an attractive option for those businesses that are looking to relocate here. Imagine that, changing the conversation that we are bringing businesses here to Los Angeles. I want to be part of that effort, and I want to be a partner with you in being a part of an effort like that. It's an essential element for the continued economic growth of the city and the commitment that we all share for our children's future. At the Chamber, we have had a continued to be helpful and to be good partners with each of you. We will bring forward business views. Sometimes, they may be a little hard to hear or maybe a little unpopular, but nonetheless, it's a view that's important to hear. I ask that you remain open to listening and to having a dialogue with us. And please know that our doors are open for you. My door will be open to you. We appreciate your engagement and your support and ask that you recommit with me. I know that together, we can achieve the best outcomes for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you. At this point, we will highlight some of our advocacy priorities, and I want to pass this mic over to our Vice Chair, Jerry Newman.
Thank you very much, councilmembers. Madam President. First, isn't she great? It is...as the incoming chair, it is amazing to have a partner like Maria in the work that we're going to do as a Chamber, to move from the foundation that has been created in the past to the future that we want to create tomorrow. The changing of the Chamber will reach out to form new partnership, new relationships across the broad spectrum of our community and truly be an advocate for the community as a whole. We look to working with you, the City Council, the leaders of our community, in that endeavor to reach out and to make a difference in this community, both by affecting your policy and by working with you on policies that better everybody, both economically and socially. There are a number of issues...actually, before I move on, I would like to take a moment and thank a number of the councilmembers who did show up this morning and speak with us. Councilmember Rodriguez, Price, Rue, Kokorian, Corretts, Blumenfeld, thank you for being there. Thank you for coming. Our members meant a lot to hear from you and to know that you were engaged with us as well. In that engagement, it's important to recognize some of the priorities that we have, some of the outlook that we have. We are coming up on the tail end of the work that you did to revise the gross receipts tax. You had a three-year outlook, and that three years is coming to an end. And we are looking at the data overall, and I think you'll hear some of the economic data from Mr. Thornburg, about the increases in revenue to the city that has resulted from that change. We would like to work with you to re-up that commitment...councilmember Farrell as well, who was there this morning. I don't think I mentioned him. We are looking with you to re-up that commitment and demonstrate that by working together, Los Angeles can be a welcoming place for business. And we would like to work with you to open up that conversation about the next three years, Phase Two of the business tax reform. And we are hoping that that dialogue will continue and that we can work towards that end. At the Chamber, we also believe that we are uniquely situated to ensure companies are contract-ready, particularly for work in our priority in your proprietary departments. We've had conversations with DWP, with Lawwell, with Public Works already to get a sense of the need and opportunity for small businesses, and we are working to collaborate with the city on programs to streamline the contracting process and increase capacity for business assistance so our local businesses can thrive. The best way to grow good jobs is to create a business climate where companies can grow and hire and invest back into the city. Our commitment in the Chamber to reach out to our smaller members as well as our large members is essential in driving that job priority. And we think that by working with small businesses as well as large business, we can form partnerships that work with Los Angeles moving forward, so that everything you do not only benefits our citizens but creates jobs for them as well. The Chamber is not just about business. The Chamber is about social priorities as well, priorities like education, like working with communities to better and have cleaner, safer communities. But it's also about serving our most vulnerable of our communities. We at the Chamber started over 10 years ago in the Business Leaders Task Force on homelessness to work with the United Way on solutions to ending homelessness. And for the first time in years, the 2018 Greater Los Angeles Homeless Council showed a slight decrease in homelessness. And that is to the credit of the work that we are doing with you and together in changing both the outlook for people that are homeless, as well as the creation of housing for supportive services that allow people a place to come home to. The work that you are doing in a bridge home, the work you have done to create Measure H and HHH and pass permanent supportive housing measures, as well as the Permanent Supportive Housing Ordinance, is a means of expediting a better life for those individuals who are currently on the street. While we work together on site selection approval for supportive housing in every district, the business community also is working with you on a bridge home to begin getting people in every district into shelter and providing the services they need. This work is so essential and central to what the Chamber does. The ethos and the values of our Chamber are represented by how we work to support everyone in our community, from the people that are most vulnerable to the people that are in the C suites of our largest businesses. And it is only through helping each and every one of those that we will make a difference in this community. And we are committed to working with you on ensuring that our most vulnerable neighbors are taken care of. And you can count on us, in every essence, to stand shoulder to shoulder with you, to support you from behind and to lead in front when the time is right and when you ask and call upon us, so that we ensure that everyone in the city has a home. With that, I'd also like to turn over for some additional priorities to Jessica.
Thanks, Jerry. As a global city, it is vital to keep our economic drivers competitive: our air and seaports and our convention center. Los Angeles International Airport has made major strides over the last year in awarding contracts for the automated people mover and conrak, key components of elevating the passenger experience. All terminals are undergoing modernization. In fact, American Airlines just broke ground on $1.6 billion in improvements this morning. At the Port of Los Angeles, an innovative partnership with GE is underway to implement game-changing efficiencies in the supply chain operation so that we can truly grow green. And at the Los Angeles Convention Center, managed by AEG, just became the first convention center in the country to permanently install a 5G network. These are all examples of public-private partnerships intended to ensure the facilities that serve as the foundation of our local economy are primed and competitive for decades to come. As the public sector lays the infrastructure groundwork for the private sector and the public to access L.A. and the rest of the world more efficiently, coordination among public and private sectors will be imperative to ensuring that the L.A. region benefits from investments in our economic infrastructure. The next priority I wanted to mention is collaborating on water and energy initiatives for a sustainable city. One of the winning messages from the 2028 Olympic bid was that Los Angeles was committed to the most sustainable games ever. In aspiring towards a sustainable city we envision ourselves to be a decade from now, we must modernize our energy delivery systems, deploy cleaner fuels and vehicle technology, and secure reliable baseline water supply. Reliability and affordability are of paramount importance to any sustainability initiatives. We must focus on the deployment of proven technologies and balance economic feasibility and environmental stewardship as we embark on these ambitious programs. Next, we must also increase partnerships to ensure a quality public education system from cradle to career. The success of our city is dependent upon the success of our schools and ensuring our workforce is adequately prepared for the jobs of tomorrow. By supporting quality early learning, linked learning, and career pathways linked to demand industries and occupations, the city and business community can ensure more young Angelinos have access to economic and social mobility. Through investments in higher L.A.'s youth, the Los Angeles College Promise, as well as critical partnerships like the Partnership Performance Pilots, which seeks to coordinate and integrate the delivery of education, workforce, and social services for disconnected youth ages 16 to 24, we can connect education to the workforce opportunities of tomorrow. Those are all initiatives that we're proud to work on the city with. And I will turn the mic back over to Maria to conclude.
Great. Thank you, Jessica, and thank you, Jerry, for outlining that. One of the things that I just wanted to mention, as I've, you know, done this tour here, I'm just under three months, but one of the recurring things that I have heard over and over again, which is something that we will be looking at at the Chamber, is the dire need to increase the affordable housing opportunities for all. In just a few weeks, the Chamber leadership will be convening C-suite executives from the Los Angeles area to bring the business community, business leaders, together to look at this issue and see, what can we do collectively? That's just an example of one of the things that the Chamber does really well, and that's in terms of convening important leaders around an issue. So we will look forward to getting back with you and sharing the outcome of important meetings like that. Again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to share our economic priorities for Los Angeles. I appreciate the partnership that we have had at the Chamber in the past. I am so grateful for how you have all welcomed me, and I look forward to deepening those ties as we move forward. So before I turn the presentation over to Chris Thornburg, I wanted to say a special thank you to Council President Herb Wesson. Even in his absence, I want to mention, he has been a partner with us last year to do the first-ever deep-dive look into a council district. A priority of our 2017 Board Chair, Steve Nissen, this report looks at a variety of economic factors, community by community, in order to gain an understanding of local trends and opportunities. Chris will talk a little bit more about this specific project, which was just publicly released last week. We'd love to partner with other council offices on similar efforts. So with that, let me pass it over to Chris Thornburg.
Good morning, councilmembers. It is a pleasure to be back with you again this year, 2018, to discuss, what is it, the ninth? The ninth year we've done this? Ninth year of doing the Course to City Council District Report. I am excited to be back with you to discuss some of the highlights of this report. I'm just getting my notes lined up here to go ahead and do this. So in general, of course, I see you're all busy looking through the numbers, which is exciting. That's exactly what we're here to discuss, of course, at some level. What I want to do today is I'm going to start out, as I typically do, with a very large picture of where the economy is going nationally speaking, particularly since, as we all know, we're right on the edge of being the longest economic expansion in U.S. history, and everybody has to start thinking about when that next downturn is going to occur. Going to bring it home to California, Los Angeles, of course, right to the city and the city council districts itself. And then I'm going to turn it over to Tanner Osman, who's sitting next to me here. Tanner's one of my new team members at Beacon Economics. Comes to us from urban planning at UCLA, and he actually led the charge on the deep-dive for Council District 10. I like to always remember just a little bit about why we do this report. Of course, in business, the very favorite, very common mantra is if you can't measure it, you can't manage it. And the argument is, in a city as large as the city of Los Angeles, the lack of information that councilmembers had relative to what was performing, not just in the city, but in their own specific districts, of course, has always been a big impediment to what I would call managing this enormous and wonderful city. The idea here, of course, is to use new sets of data, the confidential employment data, the American Community Survey data, in ways that have never really been used before for a city of this size, to give you that kind of look on a council district by council district basis of what's happening in the city right now, over the course of the last few years, to help you better understand the forces at play within your district. We have done this for a number of years now, and every year, of course, I have to give a shout-out to Jan Perry and the Office of Development and the Mayor's Office, as they make the access to the confidential employment data for us. We also have to thank a number of city departments, including Department of Finance and Planning, for their help on collecting some of these other tax receipts data and, of course, some of the building permit data. So thanks to them as well. I should start out a little bit, of course, with the fact that this is the 10th year anniversary of the failure of Lehman Brothers. Let's give a round-out, of course, to the big collapse that set off the chaos over the preceding years, as the case may be. You know, when this, of course, was being announced a couple of months ago, I pulled out some of my old slides. And it's worth remembering, while Lehman Brothers failed in August of 2008, the recession technically began in December of 2007. We still kind of exist in what I call the Wall Street version of the world, where somehow or other, we think that it was the failure of Lehman Brothers and the collapse of the stock market that had such a negative impact on the economy. Really, all along, it was not what, if you will, what Wall Street meant for Main Street, but rather what Main Street meant for Wall Street. What happened back then, with the benefit of hindsight, was very clear. The real problems in the U.S. economy had to do with the massive imbalances that had built up in the middle part of last decade. Imbalances in housing in terms of overbuilding and overborrowing, imbalances in the financial sector in terms of their leveraging up, and last but not least, imbalances having to do with the American household, who felt excessively rich because of the real estate bubble and spent an excessive amount of money on current expenditures, didn't save enough. When everything started to unwind in 2006, it was really only a matter of time before the Great Recession hit. And again, for those willing to look at the indicators, it was pretty obvious. What's interesting is how long into the process the failure of Lehman and the collapse of the stock market actually occurred, since after all, it was nine months after the downturn technically began when the market hit. I like to say that it was that point in time when the economy went from denial of the problems that existed to utter hysteria about them. And in many ways, I feel like the hysteria has never left. Over the last decade, the U.S. economy has steadily improved. And today, candidly, the overarching numbers suggest that the U.S. economy has never been healthier, at least not in the last 25 years, than it is right now. And yet, every day, we talk about how bad things are. These...I like to call this ongoing pessimism miserableism, the idea that we, as a nation, are constantly trying to convince ourselves of how bad things are, when, in fact, again, things are very good. The big picture is this: the economy right now is doing great. We had, of course, about a 4% growth in the second quarter, another 4% growth in the third quarter. Some of this has to do with strong underlying fundamentals. Some of this has to do with the fiscal stimulus plan that was put in at the end of last year. Most important, of course, is two things. A, California is still way out in front in terms of growth. And B, the chance of a recession right now is still very, very low. It's easy to call this the longest expansion. Now, that may be an unusual point, given that, of course, that the Wall Street Journal poll for next recessions, their poll of 100 economists or so, suggested that the next recession is going to be in 2020. I like to point out, last year's Next Recession poll told us the next recession was going to be in 2019, and in 2016, the Next Recession poll said it was going to be in 2018. So always two years out. Of course, eventually, they'll be right, but not right now, as the case may be. The reason you can't call recession now, unlike you could in 2006, is you don't have the underlying imbalances. And what I like to say is there's no point in discussing when until you have a why. If the U.S. economy is imbalanced, this expansion will continue. And I'm quite positive, you have at least two, if not three, years of expansion in front of us, given current circumstances. Now, it isn't all good. We have labor shortage problems. We have housing shortages, market volatility, an aggressive Fed, sharp growth in government deficits. All of these things are creating turbulence. But for me, the biggest worry of all is that political chaos in Washington, D.C., political chaos that candidly prevents us from looking at long-term challenges in the U.S. economy, whether it's Medicare, Medicaid, Social Security, infrastructure investments, or wealth inequality. We're just not paying attention to the real issues. Instead, we continue to devolve into this political chaos on a day-to-day basis. So again, getting into some of the broad numbers, the economy continues to grow at city pace, consumer spending... a steady pace, consumer spending is nice and strong. What's most important is the financial circumstances for American consumers has never been quite as good. Savings rates are up, the debt levels are fine, the credit markets are nice and solid still. Housing markets continue to grow at a nice, steady pace. It's interesting, not over the course of this summer, you have seen a slowdown in housing, slowdown in price growth, slowdown in, if you will, sales. But remember, all of this is predicated on the basis of a small increase in interest rates. Overall, the underlying fundamentals of the American housing market are still very, very strong. Yet it's interesting, even that tiny, tiny little increase in inventories we saw over the last two months because of the little bit of a slowdown in sales, has led to these kind of crazy headlines, housing market in sign of collapse, cracking, and so on and so forth. Again, completely out of touch with the underlying strong fundamentals in our economy today. In fact, there's good news. Homeownership rates are starting to climb again, particularly for millennials, they're starting to get back into the market. In the suburban regions, very solid numbers there. As, of course, for the recent market chaos, we know over the last week or so, there's been all sorts of stock market bouncing around, another drop today, at least as of this morning, another percent or so, all, of course, predicated on the increase of this small increase in interest rates. And that's the key. Look on the left-hand side here, where mortgage rates are. Yes, they've risen, but again, relative to the last 30 years, these are still very, very low rates. In fact, the chaos in Wall Street right now, and the declines in the stock market, say a lot more about the problems in Wall Street rather than the problems in Main Street. This is not about anything fundamental to the U.S. economy. This just has to do with an excessively volatile market driven by electronic trading. What's supporting consumer spending, what's supporting, of course, the housing market is very strong fundamentals in the labor market, very solid numbers there, about 1.7% growth. There has been a bit of a slowdown in job growth, particularly here in California, but it's not due to a weak economy. It's due to a lack of labor. Here's probably the most important slide I can show you on the U.S. economy. On the left is the job openings rate, and on the right is the unemployment rate. Right now, the job openings rate inside the United States is 4.3%, the unemployment rate is 3.9%. In other words, there are more job openings than there are people looking for work in the U.S. economy. That is the biggest issue employers are facing across this country: How do we fill open spots? Now, it's interesting, because this has been acknowledged by economists. In fact, last year, I'm sorry, I should point out that with a tight labor market, wages are in fact rising. The bigger issue is not a function of wages. Wages have been rising, once you look at them, right? The bigger issue is rising wages, a very tight labor market, lots of job opportunities, and yet, overall, labor force really isn't expanding rapidly. And that has to do, of course, with the lack of adults. The boomer wave is turning into a boomer bust. And right now, for every boomer who retires, we're only bringing about 1.1 millennials in, which brings me to my broader point. Last year, the Congressional Budget Office put out a basic report. They said, "How do you make the U.S. economy grow faster? How do we overcome secular stagnation?" Well, number one on the list was enact immigration reform to increase the number of workers available to American employers. Now, this gets back to, of course, I think, one of the primary issues we all have to acknowledge, that immigration is a solution to many of the issues that we face in this nation, not a problem. Of course, we understand where Washington, D.C. is going on that particular front, and it's not healthy for the U.S. economy. As for California, we continue to be out in front. Over the last five years, our state's been the eighth fastest-growing from a job basis, one out of six jobs created right here in the state of California. State output growth has been faster than the U.S. growth, and that started back in 2013, and it continues. The California economy has been a shining star in the U.S. Now, this came out too recently. You may have heard, of course, that California is now the fifth-largest economy in the world. Well, one of my favorite grumpy old men is Joel Cockin down at Chapman University, who pointed out on the radio the other day that while it is true California is the fifth-largest economy, quote-unquote, "almost all income growth and high-end job growth took place in Silicon Valley." In other words, the rest of the state is a giant trash heap. Well, unfortunately, that's not true in any way, shape, or form.
Fortunately.
Exactly. Fortunately, rather. Yeah, the Bay Area absolutely has a lot of high-income jobs, but overall, in terms of its contribution to job growth in the state, it's been a very, very small supplier of jobs, largely because of the housing issues that are so problematic in the Bay Area, as much as in L.A. It's even worse up there right now. Forty percent of high-end jobs paying over $100K formed in that area, but then the other 40% were right here in coastal Southern California. And again, if you look in the long run, over the last 20 years, 40% of all new employed residents in the state of California are living in three counties: Los Angeles, San Bernardino, and Riverside. It is right here, the greater Los Angeles region, that is the center of economic growth, the center of the economy in the state of California. And I only wish that the state representatives up in Sacramento would pay a little more attention to that particular situation. And of course, wage growth is very strong here as well. In fact, there's plenty of great numbers. The 2017 American Community Survey top-line numbers just came out, and what it shows is poverty rates continue to fall, the number of insured continues to be at a record-high level here in Los Angeles, and 91.4% in 2017. Very good numbers on that particular front. Non-residential permits are great, taxable sales are starting to pick up again in the state. But of course, with all this good news, overall, we see slowing employment growth. In Los Angeles, for example, a couple of years ago, county growth was 2.3%. That's since slowed to 1.4%. And it is the case that many of the coastal economies, San Diego, Los Angeles, Orange County, Oakland, San Francisco, have all seen a distinct slowing in job growth. Well, again, this is not a function of a weak economy. What tells you everything you need to know is that while San Jose is still the fastest-growing economy, the next three is the inland empire, Fresno and Stockton. When the inland areas of the state are growing fastest, you start to realize that this, yet again, is a symptom of labor supply constraints rather than a weak economy. Right now, California's unemployment rate is at a record-low level. It has never been lower than it is right now. And with wages rising here faster than most anyplace else in the United States, this would be exactly the point in time when people would be moving here, but they're not. In fact, net migration into the state is a paltry 0.3%. This is the weakest in any strong economic expansion ever, and this all goes back to housing, or more specifically, lack thereof. I appreciate that prices are going up tremendously, but this is not 2005. 2005, home prices were going up tremendously because of subprime lending. This time around, this is true supply constraints. When you have a strong economy, a lot of income gains, but not enough housing construction, that, of course, natural market response is higher and higher prices. This is how the market allocates. If you look at the numbers, it's very clear. To maintain 2% job growth in the state of California, this state needs to have 210,000 to 260,000 residential building permits per year. We are now running 125,000, about half of what we need. That is a critical issue. And I'm talking doubling the number of permits. I, with you, worry about affordability. I worry about homelessness. I worry about low-income households that are being pushed to the edge as a result of housing. But understand, overall, the housing crisis has to be basically managed by increasing supply. Worry about those being displaced, but also work very hard to increase the overall supply of new housing coming online. That is a critical need for the state of California. In fact, economic development efforts right now in the state can be boiled down to housing because there are plenty of job opportunities. It's getting the population to fill those jobs. That's the critical thing. Now, how about here in L.A.? Let's start getting cut into the chase. Record numbers in L.A. It's been like that for a number of years. Household employment, that is to say, employed residents of L.A. County is now at 4.9 million, never been higher. Payroll employment in the state of Cali, in Los Angeles County, 4.5 million, highest it's ever been. And while some sectors, such as retail, wholesale, manufacturing in the county, have seen declines in employment over the course of the last year, hospitality, construction, admin support, education, professional scientific services, all strongly up. Lots of job growth, lots of job growth in important, high-income sectors. The big issue here, again, is unemployment. Unemployment in the county of Los Angeles has never been lower. Unemployment in the inland empire has never been lower. Unemployment in Ventura has never been lower. The numbers you're facing today are truly astonishing. We live in a wonderful time, but again, it gets back to the idea that economic development today is largely housing development. We got to fill in the gap that is in the local employment markets. Now, how about the city? Last year, when I came here, I had a little bit of dissipating news. We saw a little bit of a job growth slowdown. This year, I'm happy to announce that that has reversed itself. While the county has started to slow down, the city by itself has started to accelerate. And now, job growth in the city, about 2.2%, is greater than county job growth by about 1.3%. And of course, wages as well are rising. Right now, about 1.42 million jobs in the city have 2.2%. Healthcare up 5.2%, one of the shining stars. Other services, 6%. Logistics, 6.5%. Information, of course, home of both Hollywood as well as tech jobs, up 6%. Very good numbers across the board. Wages getting up close to $65,000 per payroll employer right now, again, a record-high level. Very, very solid numbers. Looking across the different districts, and I'll get a little bit into the specific areas in just a second, but some of the big growth, interesting, you know, some of the higher employment regions, such as Council District 5 and Council District 11, haven't been the source of all job growth. In fact, Council District 14, which is the biggest job center in the city, actually had a tiny bit of decline because of manufacturing jobs in that particular district. The really strong numbers you're seeing are Council District 7 and 8, some of the smaller districts, seeing very high numbers, 8% growth, 5% growth. You're seeing economic opportunities spread out from the otherwise core districts. Commercial permits in the city continue to run much hotter than the rest of the county at this particular point in time. Office numbers are up. Retail has fallen just a little bit, but of course, other construction also starting to grow. Again, very solid numbers here, lots of money investing in this city. Looking at non-residential permits, the big stars out there, you're seeing lots of growth in District 2, lots of growth in District 4 and 5, and of course, 11 and 13, again, very, very solid numbers here. Helpful overall, about 10% for the city in terms of non-residential permit valuations. Incomes are also up. This is not dated in your book, because, again, this is 2017 ACS numbers that were just released a few weeks ago, but again, very exciting numbers. Take a look on the left-hand side there, looking at the county versus the city. Overall, city incomes are a little lower than the county, but they're growing faster. Median income in the city from '15 to '17 grew 15.7% over those two years, compared to 9.9% for the county overall. And remember, the median is growing faster than the mean. That suggests that you're seeing bottom-end job growth. You're seeing a decline in inequality for the first time in a very long time. And you can certainly see that on the right-hand side. That's increases in income between '15 and '17 by levels of education. Believe it or not, the highest increases in income are for those people without a high school degree. The labor shortages are giving those folks who have been on the outside for the first few years of the recovery from the Great Recession opportunities like they've never been able to see before, and those opportunities, of course, are leading to more job opportunities, higher income, more hours per week. Again, our most disadvantaged residents are finally getting a leg up, and this is fantastic news for the city overall. And you can see some of the increases in household income. Yes, District 5 did very well, not a big surprise there, but then again, District 1 and 10, and 14, which are lower-income districts, have also seen very solid increases in household income. Powerful, powerful trends in the city right now. You see really, if you will, a democratic, small "d," increase in incomes. Everybody's benefiting from the expansion we're in right now. Now, it is true, the apartment markets are tight. Building has helped just a little bit. Vacancy rates have gone from 3% to about 3.3%, but rents are rising dramatically. But what's interesting here, and something to keep an eye on, this goes back to the idea about supply versus affordability. There are folks out there on the margin struggling, and we need to worry about them, but at the same time, because incomes are rising, believe it or not, rental burdens in the city of Los Angeles have actually been falling over the last few years. The number of rent-constrained households paying over 30% of their incomes for rents is falling. The median rent as a share of income is falling. So overall, we are making progress. But again, more supply is as important as helping disadvantaged folks who haven't been able to benefit from the current economic expansion. We need to focus on them, but the broader issues of supply are very important. And how is supply going? Well, fiscal year 2018, ending in June of this year, solid number, little increase from '17. Again, too slow, candidly, for the rate of job growth. We still need even more permits, 10, 15, 20% increases over the next few years, if possible. More permits is the way to continue economic growth in the city at this particular point in time, so good trends, but we need more of that. Some of the stars there in terms of permits, 3, 4, 10, 11, and 13, all solid increases at this particular point in time for residential permits. So let's get into a little bit of the individual districts, and I can't emphasize this enough, I mentioned this at the beginning, that there's a whole lot of what in these books we gave you, there's a whole lot of data, and not a lot of why. And understand that the what is the first step to figure out the why. What we're most excited in terms of, say, doing the Council District 10 deep dive, is the first step, if you will, to getting more into the why. But in terms of the whats, here are some of the top-line things. For example, District Run, Gil Cedillo, very solid numbers there, a 10% increase in median household incomes. Employment was up 6.2%. District 1 overall was one of the shining stars in terms of growth out there today. District 2, Paul, Paul Correian's district, very solid numbers there. Private sector employment didn't increase by very much, but transportation and warehouse was up very, very strongly. The overall weak employment growth was because of some losses in manufacturing. Manufacturing has absolutely been moving out of the city, in many cases, out to the inland empire, but other sectors are moving in. Also important, of course, for Correian's district, is the fact that median household incomes, again, increased by a very solid 4.3%. In terms of District 3, the big things here, a little bit of decline in population, but overall, a big surge in overall residential permits, and also a big bump in grocery seat tax in 2017, suggesting substantial increases in overall business activity. In District Number 4, one of the most important things for District 4, it is near the center of the city, has been a very strong increase in the number of building permits. The kind of permits, the kind of building we need, residential units, we want them to be core, we want them to be central, close to employment centers. That's one of the ways of taking some of the stress, if you will, off our road system, and seeing these numbers here, again, very, very positive in the center of the city like this. Also, very good job growth in terms of some important sectors, particularly information. Again, that's both tech and Hollywood, good numbers there for the economy. District Number 5, Paul Corretts, that's actually my district, I should point out. Again, one of the highest-income districts and a center of very high-income jobs, professional services being top of the list on that particular front. Not much to say about District 5, except for the traffic on Roscommon Road is terrible, Paul, and we need to fix that. Quicker you get the tunnel built, the happier the neighborhood's going to be. So District 6, of course, Nury Martinez, up in the northern part of the city, as the case may be. Again, very positive numbers here, 2.9% growth in jobs. Healthcare and hospitality leading the charge in that particular front. And again, lots of new residential construction, also a nice bounce in taxable sales, suggesting more retail spending in that particular part of the city, good numbers there. District 7, of course, again, a very solid district in terms of job growth, 5% job growth, up to about 52,000 jobs overall. Wages are going up at a nice pace as well, very solid numbers there. Grocery seat tax for certain sectors, particularly other services, grew very, very sharply. Number of households is up 3.5%, and again, median household incomes up by 4.4%. Very solid numbers there. District 8, probably, again, we're seeing a lot of new multifamily construction in District 8. That's very good to see, want to see more of that. This is, I think, one of the primary parts of the city that could really benefit from having more housing coming in. Private sector employment there grew a little slower than overall, I'm sorry, grew very rapidly overall, 8.2%. Very solid numbers in terms of new job growth in District 8. And again, as already noted, while there's a small decline in population, a very stark increase in overall housing units, very good to see. District Number 9 right now, again, overall wages here grew about 3.3%. This is one of the districts that has been, had the toughest time sort of catching up with the rest of the economy, as the case may be. But on the other hand, there's one really good thing happening here, and that is there was an enormous surge in non-residential construction, new invests moving into this district, and that heralds, of course, a whole new era of building in the area. So we're eager to see how this pans out over the next couple of years as these numbers come in. Of course, District 10, I'm not going to talk too much about, because I know Tanner's going to get into that, but of course, 2016, very strong increase in population, about 6% overall. Median household income was up, grocery seats tax are up, sales tax were up. It is one of the strongest-growing parts of the city at this particular point in time, very solid numbers there. District 11, of course, Mike Bonin, over there on the west side, very solid numbers here. In terms of employment, up 5%, and of course, these are very high-income jobs, we know this is the home of Silicon Beach, solid numbers there. My only downside for, of course, District 11 would be a little bit of a slowdown in residential permits. Again, when you think about where we want residents being built, we want it being built close to these growing job centers. The fact that there are jobs, we're seeing less construction on the west side as opposed to more construction suggests you've got to put more stress on the highways, which are already incredibly distressed right now. Would love to see more growth there, but again, in terms of a job center, doing absolutely great. District 12, Mitch Englander, solid numbers here. Again, residential permit increases were up, commercial building permits were up, a Again, residential permit increases were up, commercial building permits were up, a lot of new construction in this particular district, and I should point out that grocery seat tax have been growing very strongly over the last couple of years, suggesting, of course, of very good numbers from overall just business activity in the district. In terms of District Thirteen, Mitch, happy birthday, I should point out. By the way, it's my birthday, too, so power, Libra. But yeah, happy birthday. Median household income up 6% here, very solid numbers. Residential permits the last two years, very, very strong at this particular point in time. Again, good growth numbers. District Fourteen, District Fourteen was the only district that saw declines in jobs over the course of there, and mind you, this is the biggest job growth area, and overall, the declines were mainly based in manufacturing. There was a couple of large companies, of course, that went out of business, and that was took the hit. But if you look at other parts of the area, particular, say, finance or professional services, very solid number here, and a very solid population growth, 5% from 2015 to 2016, and sales tax, of course, up as well because of all the new residents, very good there. And last but not least, of course, District Fifteen down by the port, Joe, your district. Last year, we had some bad news, but this year, the news is much better. Job growth is back into the positive side, taxable sales starting to pick up, and wholesale trade, of course, obviously, in those ports, numbers are very solid in terms of job growth there. And you know, even with some of the trade disruptions we're seeing, the Port of L.A. is actually having a very good year at this point in time. It hasn't hit. If there's going to be a hit, it hasn't shown up yet, so the numbers, again, down in the southern part of the city, doing very well at this point in time. So again, this is a very top-line overview. You have a million numbers in front of you. The whole idea here, of course, is this to be a first pass. And I'm real excited this year that we are able to have the opportunity to work with Herb Wesson and his office to do a little bit of a deep dive on the Council District Ten. And again, the idea here is to take this data and cut it and slice it and dice it even more, looking at neighborhoods, looking at specific districts, to really getting an understanding of what's happening within a district. And you know, we're hopeful that this becomes a model. I'd like to see basically the ability to do something like this for every district as we move forward. To introduce our CD-10 Deep Dive Report, I'm going to turn it over to Tanner. Go ahead and click for me. That's the right button, yes. All right, so Tanner.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Chris, and it's great to be here today. As Chris mentioned, this is the first effort that Beacon has made along with the Chamber of Commerce to really drill in and look inside sort of the black box of some of these council districts. For nine years, we've been doing a great job of providing some very high-level analysis of what has been changing within given districts on a year-over-year basis, but in this type of report now, we're able to look an extended period of time and really drill into individual neighborhoods within the council district. And to sort of piggyback on something which Chris mentioned, a lot of what the economic report does is show the what, and in the council district report, we're able to get a little more into the why and sort of understand a little bit more about what is happening and moving these local economies. So if you were to look at Council District Ten, it's comprised of 52 separate neighborhoods, and one of the interesting features of the data that we have available today is we can drill down at the individual neighborhood level within a council district. We can disaggregate and look at subregions within these different district councils to understand what is moving their economy and what are some of the trends which are shaping individual districts, even at a sub, oh, sorry, individual neighborhoods even at a sub-district level. Now, a big part of what we try to do in these reports is accentuate the positives, as Chris mentioned, in relation to District Ten. We've seen phenomenal income growth on a year-over-year basis. So for the most recent period which we have available, household income in District Ten increased by close to 9%, which outgrew the city of Los Angeles by a rate of almost three times. So a big part of this report is showing some of the positive trends, but what we also want to do is show some of the challenges which are emerging within, or which exist for council districts as well. So if you were to look at the top line of the table here, you see that median household income in District Ten is a shade over $43,000 per year, which still lags a little bit behind the city of Los Angeles and Los Angeles counties. So a big part of what we're doing is not only showing things that are improving within districts, but also identifying challenges which might be faced at the district level. So if we would take a slightly longer-term look at employment growth in a district compared to Chris's slides, which was predominantly looking at year-over-year change, we see that since the Great Recession, along with the rest of the city of Los Angeles, District Council Ten has recovered very nicely. In fact, you know, the district has bragging rights because employment has grown in the district a little bit quicker than the rate for the rest of the city of Los Angeles. Now, what we can also do as well is look at which sectors within a district are growing at a faster clip than others. So a big part of the growth in the district council, oh, sorry, in the council district has been driven by growth in leisure and hospitality, in the construction sector of the economy, but we can also see that there are certain sectors in which employment has been declining in the city, oh, sorry, in the district relative to the city of Los Angeles. So again, we're looking at the District Ten on the left, employment changed by different industry categories, and on the right, we're looking at the equivalent change in the city of Los Angeles over an extended period of time. Now, some of the top-line findings that we found from the district report is that, the good news is, we have 5,000 more jobs in the district than existed nearly 10 years ago now. Now, Los Angeles is a diverse economy, and different districts are going to have different levels of specialization within the broader city economy. And within District Ten, we see that there's a strong specialization in the healthcare, leisure and hospitality, and retail sectors of the economy. So these three industries alone make up more than 53% of all jobs which exist in the district today. Now, leisure and hospitality in particular has been growing at a fantastic clip since 2008, so we've seen a growth of 64% in that particular sector within the district over time, which is, you know, quite extraordinary growth rate, which is double the growth rate that you would have seen in the rest of the city. We also seen very encouraging signs in the healthcare sector and the retail sector, and as I mentioned on the slide before, manufacturing employment has fallen in the city by 43%. Now, what we try to do in these reports is to try and contextualize some of these findings. So when we highlight sectors which have lost employment, in this case, manufacturing, we're able to describe what has been going on. This isn't something which is specific to District Ten, this is part of a broader trend which has been happening in the regional and to a certain extent, the national economy as well, as the manufacturing sector has been increasingly moving towards, has become increasingly automated over time, and has been subject to some level of offshoring as well. So again, we're able to point out these broad trends, but we're able to contextualize what has been happening and underline why these movements have been occurring at the district level. Now, one of the really cool things that we're able to do with these sorts of analyses, as I mentioned at the outset, is carve up the district in different ways, and you know, this is a function that we're still sort of experimenting with to a certain extent, and we can sort of divide, we can sort of carve these districts up in a fashion which pleases council members and local planners. But in this particular case here, what we tried to do is take out, or sort of divide District Ten up into subregions, and here, by doing this, you can see that one neighborhood within District Ten, Koreatown, accounts for 52% of employment in the council district, and around a third of the employment lies in that sort of central area of the district. And if you were to go west of Fairfax, around about 13% of the district's employment is found in that part of the subregion. And again, we can really divide these councils up in a number of different ways around distinct neighborhoods which exist within the council districts. We can also sort of track change which has been occurring at this subregional level over time. So if we were to look at Koreatown, while it has the largest share of jobs within District Ten, it hasn't seen the fastest rate of growth. So where we have seen the fastest rate of growth is that part of District Ten, which is west of Fairfax Avenue, and part of the reason that it has been outgrowing Koreatown to this extent is that it is starting from a smaller base. But you know, it is a very interesting way for council members to sort of, again, flip open a black box of these districts and try and understand at a sort of a ground level what is changing at almost a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis. Other things that we are able to do is to try to look at the anatomy of business establishments within given districts and compare employment across establishments by different sizes in District Ten to the city of Los Angeles. So what you can see in this slide here is that if you look at small businesses, they make up a much larger share of total employment in District Ten than is the case for the city of Los Angeles. So around about a third of all employment in District Ten is located in firms or establishments of less than 15 employees. By contrast, the city of Los Angeles has a much larger share of employment in these sort of large, larger business establishments which have more than 150 employees. So we can draw the distinctions between the anatomy of businesses within the district and compare them to the city of Los Angeles, and this really helps us as sort of local planners try and understand, you know, how we can best assist the constituents and establishments which exist in our district. So if, as is the case in District Ten, we see that there's a large share of employment located in small business establishments, we can see whether these businesses have the capacity to grow within the district. You know, most businesses, or most economic development is oriented around nurturing businesses and enabling them to grow from five and 10 employees to 50 and 60 employees. And when we look at the economy in this way, we're able to do sort of a stocktake of the local land use patterns to see whether it's the case that District Ten is able to absorb the growth that might be occurring in many of these smaller businesses which exist in the community. We can also look at other ways which we might be able to help small businesses from a public policy perspective. Also, there might be some districts which might be reliant on one or two or three large employers. So these data are useful for council members in terms of trying to understand, you know, how reliant is a given district on one or two large employers, and what can a district do to maybe diversify its employment base across an array of different industries. Also, a big part of this analysis is trying to look at within which sectors of the economy these different establishments are located, oh, sorry, do business. So within District Ten, when we look at these small businesses, are they predominantly in retail, they're predominantly in the healthcare sectors of the economy? So we can dice these numbers up in a number of different ways. But overall, I'd say there are a number of key benefits to these sort of deep-dive analyses, looking inside these different, or the ability to look inside these different districts. So we're able to move beyond some of the sort of headlines, figures that we see in the economic report, and really dive into the district level and understand precisely what jobs are being created in the community, what jobs are disappearing. But better than that, we're able to look at the individual neighborhood level. So are there parts of the community and neighborhoods within the community which may be suffering more than others in terms of the economic development that is occurring there? And if that is the case, what can we do to assist these neighborhoods and try and nurture and spur economic development there? And ultimately, as a card-carrying urban planner, a big part of, a big part, sorry, one of the big uses of these data sets is the ability to look at changes which are happening at these neighborhood levels and look at how land might be rezoned and repurposed. If it's the case that there are neighborhoods within a district in which there's been a hemorrhaging of manufacturing jobs, what we're able to do is look at, do an honest analysis about whether those manufacturing jobs are likely to return to the community, and if that isn't the case, how can we repurpose this land either for housing or for other industries which might be able to thrive in the place of the manufacturing jobs which would have left? And with that, I'll pass over to Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to say one last thing about these deep dives, and Herb, I see you're watching with interest, and you know, again, I want to emphasize that the deep-dive reports are not something that just sort of gets delivered. It's an interactive process. When we were putting this report together, we worked extensively with Council Member Wesson's staff, and candidly, that conversation shouldn't end here. In fact, the report should lead to questions and more analysis, and the idea here is to really figure out how to take data and turn it into development, take data and turn it into prosperity. And that's not something that we can deliver, it's something that we can assist you with you with, and we're hopeful that you find that report, as well as the overall report on the city's health, the economy, and of course, the health of, the economic health of the residents, useful on that particular basis, and we just look forward to working with you over the course of the next year on these particular big issues. So with that, Maria.
Thank you very much. I think we are open if you had any questions for Chris or the chamber.
We have a couple of members on the queue. Mr. Bonnet?
And thanks to Maria and the whole crew for the presentation today. Always look forward to this every year, and was glad to hear about the things that we're able to do together. I mean, we are finally delivering on LAX modernization. It's happening, it's real, and it's going to pay dividends for everybody, and we're finally moving on building mass transit and building homeless housing. Not always easily, but we're doing it, and I want to thank you for your partnership on that. I just had a couple quick questions. Well, one, I was glad, you know, usually, every year, you know, I've made a joke of asking the chamber if they could say something nice about the business climate in the city of Los Angeles, because it's usually, oh, the city of Los Angeles is destroying businesses. I was glad to hear such a sanguine report this year about wages up and unemployment down, so, you know, glad to hear that the minimum wage increase we passed is working. But I had a question on a couple of the things that you said, Chris. One, when you were going over the data from CD-11, you said that residential construction was down, but in the handout I have from you, it says, "non-residential decreased, but residential remained stable and the number of units increased."
My apologies. My bullet point was wrong on that, but the number, I guess my primary argument would be here is that relative to job growth on the west side, the gap is still really strong. And you know, I appreciate, you know, also being sort of a west-side resident, although a little farther north, I appreciate the ferocity that our, shall we say, some of our local NIMBYs approach any kind of infill development. But again, from a land use planning perspective, as Tanner could certainly attest to, the idea of getting more housing closer to these strong growth centers is incredibly important, and certainly on the west side, there's a tremendous opportunity. A lot of new apartments going up around the airport, which is very exciting. I see that firsthand, that's where we're based. So, but nevertheless, from my perspective, I'd like to get back to that 2014 number would be more like it.
Sure. Do want to point out that, you know, despite the fact that people talk a lot about NIMBYs, and yes, there's pushback to a lot of different stuff, you know, the communities, the neighborhood councils on the west side have been strongly in support of a lot of different projects. Martin Expo Town Center, which is 500 units of housing, the community in West L.A., thoroughly backed, you know, the community was behind the Expo Transportation Neighborhood Plan, which increased density and increased affordable housing in West L.A. So I always want to acknowledge and encourage the positive feedback that we get from community that leads to stuff.
Absolutely.
I had just a question on the wages going up in some of the lower-income areas of the city of Los Angeles. On its face, that's wonderful, and I only half-jokingly say I'm glad that the minimum wage happened and we did that, but I want to tease out one thing, because you can look at that stat and you can say, okay, that means the people living here are getting paid more than they were a year ago. What I want to ask about is there any way to factor in or calculate how much of an impact gentrification has on that, in that people of lower wages are being forced out, moving further out of the city, and people with greater incomes are moving in, and then that would...
Absolutely, and certainly, part of the numbers you're seeing is churn, but I will tell you, statistically speaking, the churn effect is not strong enough to generate the kind of numbers we're seeing. And remember that, like, for example, when I looked at the wages overall for the city, that was broken down by level of education, and the idea here is that incomes are going up in part because low-skilled folks, those without a high school degree, are seeing the fastest pace of pay increase because of, again, the job opportunities, minimum wage, as the case may be. But there's just so many good opportunities for these folks today, and really, that's driving it, if you will, more than the churn. Now, in the context, is can we sit down and look at the churn? Can we measure the pace of gentrification? The answer is yes, we can. There is, again, data available to us that will basically give you some sense of how long a person has lived within a specific part of the city, and by looking at that and considering who's moving where, we can, in fact, sort of trace out what's happening in terms of gentrification with these specific neighborhoods, and it's something we do need to focus on.
I'd be very interested in that, because I, my gut tells me, and plenty of anecdotal evidence tells me, that that has happened significantly in Venice, where the income has gone up. Actually, the number of housing units there have gone down, because fourplexes are becoming single-family homes and stuff.
Right, exactly.
And a lot of people have been displaced, and so, you know, if we do a micro look at my district, I'd really want to drill down on that.
Absolutely, that's doable. In fact, it's doable with the... In fact, it's doable with the American Community Survey data, but we also have some other information out there, other data sets at play. So please do reach out to us. We'd love to sit down and chat with you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you very much, Madam President. And thank you all once again. Exceptionally fascinating report. Chris, I definitely want your PowerPoint because each one of those pages you whipped through, I want to spend about a half an hour looking at. So if you could, please, seriously, I think you should give the PowerPoint to all members. And Ms. Linas, welcome to your first report to the council. I hope it'll be many more. This is always incredibly instructive to all of us and it gives us all sorts of data that we can really evaluate the success of policies and potential policies that we might still explore. And I just, one data point I didn't see in here, Chris, that, I don't know if you have it offhand, but if you have, grocery receipts for the city of Los Angeles has increased by about 30% it looks like since 2010, more or less, according to the chart I'm seeing. Do you know what the county increase in grocery receipts has been over that time?
No, we don't have that data. It's hard to collect because every city has its own sort of tax base.
I don't mean the tax. I mean the grocery receipts itself.
But in general, they all have their own systems. And so it's not readily available data. It'll be good to look at though.
Okay. I'd be very interested in seeing that because that comparison is always very instructive to me. For example, in the commercial and industrial construction permitting, the chart that you show indicates that since the trough in the recession, the county, on an adjusted basis, has not increased at all. In fact, it's gone down a bit. Whereas LA's, the city of LA's permitting has gone up 50% since then.
Yeah, a lot of new construction.
So what that tells me is that when a business is making a decision about where to cite its business, where to grow its business, where to invest in brick and mortar, they're choosing the city with the purportedly onerous grocery receipts tax compared to all of our neighboring cities and unincorporated areas by a 50% margin. And that tells me that, you know, there's more that we need to do with grocery receipts, to be sure. And I look forward to working with the chamber. There's targeted steps that we should continue to take as we have in the past and we will. But I would submit that there's a number of other factors over those 10 years, eight or nine years, that have had a much bigger impact. First of all, our budget is stabilized. Whereas it was a disaster in 2010, we were teetering on bankruptcy, we now have a stable, predictable budget with a very strong reserve. The creditworthiness of this city and its services are much dramatically improved. We're investing more in our public infrastructure than anywhere else in the United States of America, particularly in transportation. We focused tremendous effort on encouraging tourism and hospitality. And the work that Mr. Bonin mentioned with the airport, that Mr. Buscagno has done around the port, so many other things have opened Los Angeles up to the world and to travelers and to investment. We have done targeted tax reform. There's more that we need to do. We've done permitting reforms in many sectors to make it easier to do business in the city of Los Angeles. And the mayor, as well as the council, has done, I think, a very aggressive job of going out and promoting Los Angeles to the global business community to bring more business here. And so has the chamber, as it always has, and we appreciate your partnership in doing that. Now, there's a lot more still to come. And the work that I've done in the ad hoc committee with my colleagues and that the Economic Development Committee has done and that a number of, the rest of us have done, have produced a number of policy changes still to come, including the city's first economic development strategy, which is being finalized now, the business advancement team that we're creating to be able to be a concierge for businesses. We're creating a small business commission. We have a small business web portal to make it much easier to do business in the city.
If I may just interject, one of the beautiful parts of the data set that we have access to is we can actually identify true small business, which is different than small establishments, which as the typical data has. So again, thinking towards the many uses of this, it's a super deep, but if you want to talk about small business, again, the data set that we use with Jam Parry and the Development Office, that can be utilized.
It's going to be incredibly valuable. Incredibly valuable. We've, since 2010, we've enacted a local preference ordinance to increase procurement opportunities for local businesses and we're improving that, improving upon that policy now. We've simplified certification for women and minority-owned businesses and other disadvantaged businesses to make it easier for them to participate. We're doing procurement reform. We have asset management now of the city's assets that we can utilize for economic development purposes. So a lot of important steps that have been taken and a lot more still to be done. And also in your deep dive on CD 10, I appreciate that you mentioned land use and how we do that. Because right now, we're undertaking comprehensive update of all the community plans in the city, expediting the turnaround for that, which is something the business community has been crying out for, for years. And this is a vitally important step that will create predictability. And more than that, it will create the opportunity for identifying targeted industries and their needs that will be job-creating in particular communities and having that be part of our planning process for the, really for the first time. And so I think the data that you've given us, as Mr. Bonin said earlier, we usually don't get a lot of, you know, glowing sort of news in this report. To me, this was an A-plus report card.
This was a great report.
And I am especially encouraged by the reduction in the income inequality factor. And I don't think it is a joke, Mike, to attribute a significant amount of that to the wage increases that come from the minimum wage here, but also economic activity which is increasing wages as well. Those two factors together are lifting up all boats. And we have, that is one area that we need to focus a lot more of our attention on, affordability and lower income wage levels. But at least the report you're giving us shows us that we're starting in the right direction in that regard, and I'm especially pleased. So thank you all very much.
Those were all really good points. Thank you. The other speaker we have is Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you. I want to echo my colleagues. Really appreciate the fact that you guys are here, that you do this report every year. It's wonderful data and, of course, we love hearing an A-plus report card on this. And, you know, going along the same lines as my colleague, I was thinking the same kinds of things. I'd love to see linkages from this data to some of the policies and to try to figure out which of the policies that we've had are responsible for some of this growth. You know, how much of it is minimum wage? How much is it the Measure M investments or the myriad of things that Mr. Kocorian mentioned, or even the Olympics? And so that we have an understanding, because we always hear in the negative years what the assumed policy is that's making everything negative. So I'd like to hear what the assumed policies are that are really helping bolster things. Obviously, there's national efforts as well, but we can control that. I did have a question and I was really interested, you talk about the housing. I agree with you 100%. That is the key to our growth moving in the future. I was pleasantly surprised to see in my district, it seemed that the number of units was higher than everywhere else in the city in terms of, we were about 1,400. I think we were, Mr. O'Farrell was close second or maybe I was second. I don't know. But that was surprising to me. Underscore, I mean, we've been doing a lot with the Warner Center 2035 plan to do that. But I was surprised it wasn't, that wasn't reflected on the value of the units. That was very different. I was lower in that category. I wanted to understand how that works and, you know, obviously, and just emphasize that, you know, how that is happening, that we have such a large number of units in the third district, but we also don't have some of the other numbers that are there.
Right. In terms of the building permits in general, I have to dig in a little deeper into the numbers to find out what's going on here. Typically, I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that it's a heavy lift on multifamily, which of course, on evaluation perspective, is considerably lower. And a lot of it depends on the kind of units that are being built. What I can tell you on this is I know the guys dig through a whole bunch of data and what we can do is dig in a little deeper on that for you and come back to you with an answer to that. I don't have it right at my fingertips at this point in time.
Great. Yeah, I'd love to dig in. I was, you know, as pleasantly surprised...
Approximately 47 million numbers in this thing right here. But keep that in your mind. Let's go ahead and look that up.
But that's just been a big emphasis. We're trying to create all levels of housing and multifamily housing in the valley. It's nice that we're succeeding in that regard. But also, the number, building a number of permits versus certificate of occupancy. You may want to look at that because sometimes there's a lag time, sometimes things that get permitted never actually get built. And so I'd love to also see the certificate of occupancy because that would be very revealing too as to, yes, we're doing our job in getting the permits done, but if there is a lag in areas for a reason why people aren't actually moving into that, that could be very revealing.
There's also some stock figures that you can get from the American Community Survey data that can be helpful as well, though it's a little noisy in terms of how the census actually collects that information. But that can also be helpful too because what you can look for is what you call kind of churn within the housing market. How many of these permits are replacing? Say, for example, you might get a building permit, but if you're tearing down a four-unit apartment building to build one house, you still have a net negative even with the permit being positive. So, yeah, that is a big question, is the type of housing that's being built. But yes, there's information out there and, again, digging into that and finding out more what's happening on those particular fronts, I think can be important. The certificate of occupancy data you referenced is actually very interesting because we've just sort of started realizing that was out there and it's something that we need to dig into a little bit deeper. We weren't able to utilize it for this report, but I'm hopeful by next year we'll be able to utilize it.
Great. I think that would be revealing to see those two numbers next to each other. And last, the trade wars that are being promoted by our president, how is that going to affect us? I mean, given the port and the incredible amount of our economy that comes through there and how dependent we are in Los Angeles.
Yeah. It, I can answer that pretty quick because this is, I don't, didn't get into it here because we're mainly talking about the city. But I'm enormously relieved that over the last month, we have had a settling out of our trade issues with Europe. We had the whole steel spat. We backed off. We're talking about renegotiating trade with Europe. In other words, we're back to the Transatlantic Trade Partnership, which we threw out two years ago because it was so terrible. Well, now it's back and I'm glad. The NAFTA renegotiation was an enormous relief. We all worry about China, but remember, Mexico and Canada are as big trading partners as China is. And had NAFTA really gone off the rails, that would have been a very scary moment for the US economy. They changed a few things. It's, I don't care what they call it. It's NAFTA, it's back. Few small changes, it's going to continue to operate. An enormous relief for our economy. The one place, obviously, that this hasn't cooled out is, obviously, with China. And on that basis, I actually will give the administration some kudos because candidly, China, they're the largest economy in the world right now and they don't play fair in the global trade sandbox. They don't live up to their WTO obligations the way they should be. They, of course, engage in wholesale theft of intellectual property rights, which, of course, is also as important to the LA economy as much as the ports are in many ways. And the fact that we're finally saying no more of this is good. Now, the question is, is how much will this disrupt the current economy? The good news is, is it's not that much. And I'll tell you why. One of the interesting things that's going on here is, you have to remember, ultimately, China will suffer more than the United States in this combat. 0.75% of the US economy goes to China on an annual basis. 4% of their economy comes here. And the supply chains for them are much longer than the supply chains for what we ship to them. So they have far more to lose and they recognize that. And you have to remember that the Chinese have a fundamental pact with the population. The Chinese government has a fundamental pact with the population, which is, we give you jobs and you let us have one party rule. And the idea that having a major trade war with the United States could disrupt their labor market is very nerve-wracking. Well, one of the immediate responses to the tariff war has been the yuan has dropped 14% relative to the US dollar. So while American importers may be paying 25% in terms of tariffs, the Chinese just gave us three fifths of that back in the form of reduction in price because the yuan is depreciated. Because they're not worried about profits, they're worried about jobs. So interestingly enough, this is really going to be a financial hit to the Chinese economy and less of an economic hit to the United States. Will it create some disruptions? Absolutely. But it's not going to be anything that would arise to the point of slowing the economy down to the point of a recession or even as much as the economy slowed down, say, in '14 and '15 because of the global commodity bust. So the fundamentals are there. We're going to be able to push through this. And I think you're going to see the ports do just fine in the context of this disruption, as the case may be. So for me, it's a bit of an interruption. Some businesses are going to have to figure out how to work their way around it. The good news is, again, you've got Mexico right below us. By the way, they have plenty of factories, plenty of suppliers who are eager and willing to work with US manufacturers, once they figure out that they're just going to have to pull away from China. On net, don't worry about it.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. Mr. Harris Tossen?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And thank you to all of you for the wonderful report that you produce every year. Many of us live in a world of generalities. People step up to the mic and say, this is going to ruin business, or this is going to save business, or this is going to solve the housing crisis or whatever. So it's nice to have actual hard data that we can go by. So we appreciate you for that. And the good news that we get to take back to District 8 on employment, where we are so confronted with challenges that often it's very hard to see progress when it's being made. And so we appreciate the documentation of that there. And it's good to see you and congratulations, Ms. Linas. I look forward to working closely with you going forward, especially in my role in the committee that our Budget Chair leads around jobs and innovation. We're very excited about many of the things going forward that we think can make it even easier to do business with the city and in the city. I have two very specific questions that are not addressed in the report. And so if you all don't know about them, it's fine, but I want to use the opportunity to ask about them. One is, is there, or do you have any idea about how to quantify the impact of homelessness on our business environment in sort of the kind of hard, crass numbers that you gave us here? As opposed to what we typically get with is homelessness is ruining business in this area, which we know it's having an impact, but what is it exactly? And I ask that because when we ask people to make investments, we want to know what the return on investment is. We know the moral and we know the political case and the social case that we want to make, that people should live indoors in a developed city like Los Angeles. We get that. But we also want to know the financial return that we'll get. That's the first question. The second question is, I really appreciated the deep dive that you did in District 10. I think that's the kind of information that any council office needs to really make sound decisions in a context, as opposed to on a case-by-case basis, which we're always kind of pushed to do. I wanted to know if you all had taken a look at all at this idea or this policy of federal opportunity zones, right? Which happen to overlap with some of the areas we reviewed in District 10. We have lots of them in District 8 and they are throughout the city. Investors tell us that's going to be a really big deal, but we're, I'm trying to get a handle on what it actually is or isn't and what you all's expectations will be based on what you already know.
Okay. Tanner might have to weigh in on this, but my two answers are, I'm not sure and I'm not sure. But to your point, look, homelessness is an issue and it's, like, just from a pure humanity standpoint, homelessness is an issue we have to face. You know, I made the point that there's two elements to the housing shortage. You know, one element is it is constraining our economy by constraining the ability for the labor force to grow. And, you know, there is an upside to that. I mean, we could talk about minimum wages, but in reality, the sheer labor shortage is also what's helping a lot of these low-income folks. And that's one of the reasons on net, even though apartment prices are going up, the actual rental burden is going down. Number of rent-constrained households is going down. That means 75 or 80% or maybe even 85% of Los Angeles households are better off from a housing perspective because their incomes are rising faster than rents. But the other 15% is where the problem exists. Because not everybody benefits in these sort of times. And you know that, yes, a lot of the folks who are homeless have problems with addiction, they have problems with mental illness, but at the same time, they're also the folks who don't benefit and that's one of the reasons why they're getting pushed into the streets. So you have to focus on ending homelessness from the, I would argue, a moral standpoint. And, you know, we need to help these folks, you need to get them housing, but at the same time, we also have to recognize you can't just focus on that one small angle of the problem, the broader problem of just more housing and building it faster and building it in the right areas, including your district. Because what's interesting is we see lots of demand and pushback in some parts of the city, but then I see other districts where I would think that you drive around, you'd see way more money going into these neighborhoods than you're seeing right now. And there's a question, is how do we get neighborhoods that haven't seen as much construction, haven't seen as much investment? How do we get them moving again? Because again, I think that's going to go some level to fixing homelessness. The broader question of the financial value of reducing homelessness... The broader question of, of the financial value of reducing homelessness, there are probably folks who've studied that out there. I don't know the literature.
Okay.
But I, you know, I'm sure from a police and crime standpoint, again, from just a long-term health standpoint, that these all have values to it. You just have to figure out what the literature says in that front. The second thing on, on the, these enterprise zones and the opportunity zones, we have gotten a flood of requests on these, and we are trying to figure them out ourselves as to how big of a deal these will play in the city, and candidly, cities across California. Beacon Economics, we work with many communities across the state, and a lot of folks have come to us and said, "Hey, what does this mean?" And again, we're still trying to get our feet underneath this, but I can tell you is that when we do figure it all out, I'll, I'll definitely give you a call
Thank you.
And let you know what we find, because that's, that's what Tanner's around for, he's my policy expert. So, anything you want to weigh in on that?
No, I think you did a great job.
Okay, great.
So, Councilmember, if I can weigh in on the, on the two questions. Relative to the impact on homelessness on valuations, sales occupancy, that sort of, that sort of thing, everything that Chris said is right relative to the human aspect of it, but to answer your specific question, there was a CBRE study that was done recently that showed a churn in occupancy that they attributed to homelessness. It didn't necessarily show an accretive effect or a decrease effect on valuation, given the overall economy, but what you're seeing is people moving out at a faster rate than they had seen previously, and they've attributed slightly to homelessness. And if the economy slips at all, there would be a sense that that would also then create decreases in valuations and, and in rent values. At least that's what they're projecting. Relative to opportunity zones, we're doing a lot of work in opportunity zones. We are waiting for regulations, so it's hard to actually say what the economic impact of opportunity zones will be. It's slightly dependent on the regulations. What we do know is that the timing effect of it will probably see a very short-term increase in valuation and a long-term kind of sell-off where, because of the way the timing works in opportunity zones. So it'll be a series of small pops that we're expecting that create inherent value for people. The question's going to be is, as that money comes back to the investor, how that's reinvested or where that's reinvested, and if it's reinvested back into opportunity zones, or if they're taking it back and putting it into other local economies. And that's the part I think that we're going to be most, having to watch the most and think about how we provide continuing opportunities within those zones to have that reinvestment happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson. Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam President, and I will not say too much to thank you, just because all my colleagues have done that. So I just wanted to add a couple of thoughts. One is the labor shortage is interesting, because I think we, we have perhaps an opportunity to help solve a problem that we couldn't otherwise. As we're noting with our targeted local hire program, where we're hiring former felons and we're hiring homeless people that normally are not looking for jobs, we're actually finding that these are the best employees that you could have. The airport, for instance, has, has told us about people that try to come in early and sneak extra hours worked without being paid, because they're so grateful and excited to have those jobs. We haven't been as successful as we had hoped. We've found it relatively easy to identify people that could work, and I think we quit around 1,200. We've probably hired, I don't know the exact number now, but probably around 300 employees through this program. I guess we're up to 400. That's exciting, but we're still, still slow as molasses from my point of view. So we still have hundreds of people that we've already pre-qualified. I don't know if there's some way for us to partner with the business community and encourage the hiring of some of the people on our lists, and also perhaps a, a city-business-community partnership where we could identify more folks that are in this category and get them hired. Because if there's a labor shortage, if we're hiring a lot of people at the entry level without beyond a high school education, this seems like a perfect synergy. And if we can get some of these folks employed, hopefully we can get some of them off the street at the same time.
I was, I was just going to say, this is the time that you create these partnerships and you get these people trained and you get them into the labor force. Because, you know, four years ago, these programs might be in place, and they might be well-meaning, but the reality is, when there's a, a surplus of workers, businesses don't have to make those efforts. But now, now that we have this labor shortage, that unemployment rate is so low, this is the perfect time to take those folks who have been marginalized and, and really get them in to the mainstream, get them into jobs. Because, you know, the reality is, is, is once you build the job history, once you get the training, once you get going, then that person becomes employable for a lifetime. And so I can't even emphasize how important those sort of opportunities are right now for the, for this, for the city. Absolutely.
Let's see if there's some way for us to, to, to follow up on that.
Yes, and I just wanted to add to that, that the Chamber today does have programs like that, that we have actively looking at different workforce models, so I'd be happy to follow up on that and connecting that, because I think that is an area that we can grow and expand into exactly what you're mentioning.
Yeah, that would be wonderful. And also, just a thought, you may not find this as productive, and I don't know how well-received it will be, but we have a lot of people that want to move to Los Angeles. We have businesses that want to move here, we have a lot of people that would like to move in, but we have such a housing shortage. My fear, if we focus on market-rate housing, is we'll just have more people move here. I don't think it'll impact the shortage of housing at all. We'll just become a bigger and bigger city with worse traffic and some other problems that come with it. I think for us to actually solve our affordability problem and our homeless problem, when we build, we have to focus on affordable housing and homeless housing and setting aside a percentage and ever greater percentage for, for that niche in our economy. So I'm personally not encouraging development in my district. It happens anyway, just because, just because people want to be in Council District 5. I've encouraged people to go to other districts, but no matter what, it's going to keep happening, I fear. And I, I certainly encourage folks to include as much affordable housing as humanly possible before I support projects.
And we would also welcome all the great things you have in Council District 5.
I would be happy to send them elsewhere.
Anyone want to address Mr. Corretts, or we're done?
Two things, I think, Mr. Corretts. One, on, on the, on the employment issue, as Ms. Salinas said, it's, it's an area that the Chamber is very focused on, and as we look to the future, we are very mindful of the partnerships and coalitions we've built to help solve social issues. And in fact, that is an area that we hope to, I think is an opportunity, place not only to work with the city on it, but reach across to labor and work with labor on models that help educate employment, that make them better employees for the people that we work with at the Chamber. So I think there's a broad coalition that could be built as we look to the future. Certainly respect where you are in terms of affordable housing. I do want to point out that what we're seeing is, as construction costs are increasing substantially, the development community is looking at ways in which they can build at a lower cost, and by virtue of building even market-rate housing, are finding ways to reduce those costs, which are starting to affect affordability in various areas. And so what I would encourage is not just to look at pure affordability, but also look at mechanisms that the city can support in like modular construction or areas that help reduce those costs, that create better opportunities for workforce housing and the like. And I think those are real opportunities that we can, that we can work together on.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. I always look forward to this report as well. We have a lot to think about, a lot to noodle on as far as the numbers in our individual districts, and I would love to have a, a deeper dive in the 13th also. And congratulations and welcome, Ms. Salinas, in your new role as CEO and President of the L.A. Area Chamber. A couple of general questions I have. One, something that jumps out at me is that the median age in Los Angeles is climbing fairly significantly, especially compared to the county as well. And anecdotally, I think we all saw an influx of younger people in recent years, right? The millennial generation stepping up, and I know that baby boomers are returning out, and millennials are the largest generation now, population-wise. But with the, the median age rising, with the exception of just a few council districts, it's rising in, in all areas. As an urban core district, I always felt that the 13th has been a bit of an attraction for young talent, migrating in, immigrating in. And so what are your thoughts on what those dynamics are in relation to these numbers? I, I think there, there's something to, to think about there, and what are the implications of that?
Yeah. The median age is rising, it's rising in the entire nation, and, and while we like to talk about millennials being the biggest generation ever, they're only a few percentage points larger than the boomers. Really, boomers were that incredible wave, you know, kids where, you know, every family had 14 kids, and apparently, they were so scarred, they all had 1.3 kids and excessively parented them. That's giving us the millennials. But the, the, the point here is that this is a general problem, and where I want to go with this is maybe a little different than what you're thinking. The, the reality is, is when you think about population growth, the vast majority of population growth here in the city, here in the state, across the nation, is going to be for seniors. And going back to the housing conversation, you know, seniors today, people who are retiring at 65, are healthier and living longer than ever before. And as bad as our housing crisis is now, think about what happens when all these people retire from their jobs and they don't move, because a lot of them don't. They don't want to. They want to be close to their friends, they want to stay in their neighborhood, they want to be in their house, and that's going to exacerbate this, this housing problem that much more. The reality is, is, is you can't solve this with affordable housing. Affordable housing is great for the bottom 10, 20% of the population, but the reality is, people do want to move here. And if we want the middle class to continue to live here, then that goes back to this idea that we just have to really increase the overall supply of housing. Yes, some affordable, but a lot of market rate as well, because as boomers continue to retire, it's just going to exacerbate this shortage that already exists. This is not something unique to, to Los Angeles. This is a national thing, and, and really, California's upside is that people do want to live here. They want to move here. These young kids would prefer to live here than Iowa or Wisconsin or, or wherever it is they're moving from. But unless we build enough market-rate housing, housing that young kids can move into for their first job, that they can move into for their first house with their first kid, unless we build that, they can't come here, and you're going to end up really with this, this gap in the middle. These younger, educated kids are going to choose to live somewhere else, because they just can't make it in an expensive place like this. And I, we need everybody, is the answer.
Anecdotally, one thing I've seen is people in my age group are downsizing and selling their large homes and, but staying in the neighborhood or staying in Los Angeles and getting a nice, usually a market-rate condominium, joining an HOA and having just the luxury of not having to have a yard to take care of, et cetera. So that dynamic is taking place. I have so many friends who have done just that recently. I have a question for the L.A. Area Chamber. How does this economic report, how does this data inform your legislative priorities? What are some of the themes that are coming up for you in terms of what you now want to lobby on us and across the state?
Well, excuse me, I think one of the things that I mentioned earlier is that as we begin to convene, one of the very first meetings we'll be doing next month is to bringing our business leaders forward, our CEO, our C-suite executives. For me and for the leadership of the board, the affordable housing matter is something that is top of mind. We're building an agenda around that, and we look forward to kicking that off with our C-suite executives next month. I apologize, I've got a little tickle here. But I think that, that data that we're receiving, the data that we're seeing, the information that is being shared here, that is what's going to drive how we develop our policy agenda. That information is so important. It, it only supports the information that I, that I've received anecdotally from speaking to businesses across this region. So we do look forward to using that information and try to build an agenda around that. And I think what Chris speaks about when we're talking about how can we really grow the region, you know, one of the fundamental points is the affordable housing. That's a, that's a big issue for, whether it's a big employer or a startup that is trying to figure out where are they going to grow to the next level. A lot of times, they're looking at a state because of that affordable, affordability issue. So it is a guide, it's a very important guide. I understand how data needs to drive policy, and that I look forward to using that. And I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
Another area I would say that it's going to drive is how we look, both at the Chamber and its mission, but also how we look at policy from an industry-by-industry perspective. What you saw on the report is a breakdown by industry, and it's something that hasn't been focused on sufficiently in understanding those industries that are changing in our region, and those industries that need to be supported or provided further, you know, fodder to, to grow even faster. And so the Chamber and its policy is looking at housing, as Maria said, but it's also going to be looking at the various industries that are there and what we need to do, both for the membership within the Chamber, but how those industries function in our region.
Yeah, it's interesting. Manufacturing is way down in Los Angeles significantly, and then, and some of the trends are that malls are closing, people are buying more clothing and shoes online, so what's going to become of our retail outlets? That's changing so rapidly.
Right.
And I, I expect that those trends will be present in, in next year's report, but we have to stay ahead of those. So I look very forward to working with the Chamber and, and also in working with you on, to helping reduce the red tape in this building in terms of, especially helping our small businesses. So I look forward to talking about my open-for-business initiatives, and I think that we're all in on, on how we can help with that.
We're happy on that, and I just wanted to make one additional point, because one of the things that I mentioned at the beginning is staying in the forefront of these trends. So we understand that the habits are changing, the habits of how we consume goods, how we move around in the city.
Right.
So what is the implication back to then, to the business community, to the policies that you're leading? So that, to me, is a very important driver for the Chamber to stay ahead of that and to be able to help bring policy forward that can support a shifting economy, a changing economy.
Terrific. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Buzkayino?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, the leadership at this table, Ms. Salinas, and of course, in the, Chris, and, and the entire Chamber for coming to us each and every year. I'm happy to see in my district an increase in our building permits, and, you know, Mr. Corretts, if you're good with development, bring the housing at all income levels to CD-15, because we need supply, supply, supply as it relates to housing. You know, in, in a city that is diverse and, and moving, looking at our economy, proud to say, of course, we're number one in trade. The port is investing $1 million a day on infrastructure, terminal operations, commercial retail development. Just today, the mayor and I broke ground on American Airlines' $1.6 billion project at the airport. We're number one in passenger travel as well, as number one in tourism. And every time when people come in to our city, they spend money, helps with our sales tax, and those sales taxes go to delivery of services in, in our city. To Mr. Blumenfeld's point on, on the trade war, Mr. Jean Chiroco came and made an announcement, believe it will take about 20 to 25% hit on if indeed these tariffs start to be imposed by our neighbors in China, but the Pacific Rim is very critical to us. Other ports across the country have been saying we have to pivot to the Pacific Rim. We, the Pacific Rim has been in our line of sight for a long time, and it will forever be. So as far as the jobs and this, these trade tariffs are definitely a concern of ours moving forward. But what I did in here, I'd like to hear more, your, your input, is the future of work. If you look at today, studies continue to show that the future of work, and if you are in a repetitive job today, your job is on the line. For us, it's very important. We have ILW, longshoremen, automation is coming, if not, it's already here. In a way, we have to do everything we can as, as leaders of the city to create more innovation districts, look at enhanced infrastructure finance districts, diversify the workforce. I'd like to hear how, as a city, we can better have a, a relationship between tech companies and municipal government, because they two just don't, it's not a good marriage right now. But the tech companies are afraid of coming to us for their ideas and innovations, as we experienced with e-scooters. Last year, it was Docless bikes, now it's e-scooters, and maybe now we're going to come talk about hoverboards, Mr. President. So who knows what's coming online, but we have to So who knows what's coming online, but we have to be ready. How, what ideas can you give to this body here as it relates to preparing for the future of work?
Well, first thing is, change has been a constant, right? I mean, as the old expression goes, there was a point in time in the United States where 90 percent of all jobs were in agriculture and now it's a percent. And yet somehow or other, all those people who left the farms eventually, of course, found jobs elsewhere in the economy. And automation, particularly manufacturing output in the United States is now at an all-time high level, even though the number of jobs in manufacturing is way down. Again, automation is already here, but nevertheless, we have a 3.9 percent unemployment rate here in LA County. We used to be a huge manufacturing hub. Manufacturing is either laid off people for automation or again, just moved out of the area completely. Yet Los Angeles County has, again, a record low unemployment rate. What this all tells you is that while change does create disruption, in the long run, we can move around that disruption, that more jobs form, that people have new opportunities, that industries will form to hire people who may have left other industries. Don't get in the way of change. That's the first thing to try. If you try to stop change, which a lot of times the reaction is, no, you can't do that, we don't want this, you're going to fail and you're going to make the situation worse. So it gets really down to issues of training and retraining, helping people understand that because technology is so rapidly changing now, you know, it took hundreds of years for ag to disappear. It took, you know, about 20 years for the vast majority of auto jobs to disappear, maybe get replaced by machines. That pace of change is increasing and it's more and more important for us to train people to adapt, change, to train people to be able to change, to be, to learn, to constantly alter themselves and put themselves in a new position to move ahead. And that means really working with tech and letting them know you're open to change, you're willing to try new things.
Sure. Yeah, I've been saying that all along, let's get out of the way of technology, but I also understand the concerns we have around this body is we have to have some rules in place, some regulations in place. But let's give, all we're saying is, is give technology a chance.
Give it a chance, yeah. So, yeah.
Can I add a comment to that? Because you heard the economist view, let me just share a few thoughts, because this was one thing that was, a question that was placed to me, where do you see the chamber in 10 years from now? And I think that's a very important question, not only for me as the chamber executive, but for us as we look 10 years out in such an important region where, you know, the economy just moves so fast and there's so many things that will impact it. And for me, I just looked 10 years back and thought of examples like Silicon Beach, which was, you know, was probably existing there, but not in the manner that it's thriving today. And so for me, I think as a leader of a Chamber of Commerce for a region like Los Angeles, again, it is so important that we have that long view outlook. And I can tell you that as I move into this role, one thing that will be important for us is to not look at the today, the tomorrow, the next year, but what's the implication long-term? Workforce, we know will be impacted, the way that the economy is shaped and the, you know, how, you know, what type of industries will be created in the next 10 years? You know, we need to be able to be a partner with you so that we can help develop those and grow those here in Los Angeles.
Let me make a recommendation. We have, of course, the chairman of jobs committee, Mr. Kocorian, the chairman, Mr. Price of the, or Mr. Rue today, I mean, these names.
Economic Development?
Okay, sorry, of Economic Development.
We'll use you all.
Right. In leading an effort to, you know, as we, other cities have pivoted to the Pacific Rim, I think we need to pivot to New York City. If you look at the New York City Economic Development Corporation and look at how they're at managing the city's assets and Control of Galpern had a report on how we need to do a better job of managing our assets. That's where we can partner with the private sector and looking at our assets in the city of Los Angeles to spark innovation and look at ways to bring a diversified workforce to our city. So looking forward to continuing that dialogue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, thank you to the chamber leadership. It's an exciting report as always and I'm glad to see you have an increasingly more universal approach and a more inclusive approach, and I appreciate that. You know, Measures H and HHH have the potential of providing hundreds of millions of dollars in economic impact, a billion dollars some say, over the next several years. We know that the, these projects are going to be spread out hopefully throughout the area. But how deep do we have to dive in order to create a metric to kind of understand what the impact is of those dollars going into housing and related services? And the second question, considering CD 9 is experiencing the highest rate of unemployment in the city and some of the youngest population, what kinds of industries should we be looking at to try to attract young workers or new workers to our economy?
Those are big questions, sir. And I appreciate that District 9, again, has been one of the harder hit districts in the wake of the Great Recession and candidly, one of the slowest ones to recover as the case may be. But, you know, in this incredibly sort of constrained labor market, this is a great opportunity to think about these kind of job opportunities and how do you get employers down there? You know, one of the things about the deep dive we like to do is to, I mean, there's two ways of creating jobs within a community. One is to try and attract new employers into the region. And that's a question about what kind of opportunities, what kind of companies would want to move into the region, which is an interesting comment, but at the same time, I think the other side of it is, is how do you take businesses that already are existing there and help them grow faster? Because more often than not, actually sort of nurturing, if you will, the crops that are in the field rather than worrying about a new set of seeds is often the best way of doing it. And in many ways, this gets back to the idea of getting into the deep dive and looking at what businesses are already succeeding there. And then, once you do that deep dive, you figure out what industries are prospering that are forming in the region, then you have a somewhat sense of, you know, what do they need? How do they grow faster? Do they need financing? Do they need zoning changes? Do they need help in, say, construction of new facilities to operate in? These are the kind of big questions to be asking yourself. And I go back to the housing conversation, because one of the things about District 9 is you have not seen the housing permits in that region the way you have in other parts. And again, that goes back to this idea that if you want to build more housing and bring in more folks into the community, then one of the big questions is how does the city develop incentives to say, hey, maybe you shouldn't be in District 5, maybe you need to come down to District 9?
Yeah, that's true. And that's why I think it's important to have some kind of a metric, even if it were just over the next 10 years in your reports, some kind of metric talks about the impact of affordable housing.
Yeah.
Special need housing, homeless or whatever the category can be, because it is a special category that is impacting our communities. And it'd be good to be able to figure out how it's impacting it in ways we can measure. Thanks.
Councilman, with regard to your first question on the metrics relative to H and HHH, I think that's an important question to understand and see where those dollars are being spent. I know that even this morning, as part of the chamber membership that we brought here was a service provider that is increasing in their jobs and their outreach through Measure H dollars and it's in your district. So I know that that is happening out here. We know that we have members that are joining the chamber because of that and are looking to come to City Hall to have that discussion. But I do think a deeper dive into those numbers is warranted.
Thank you, Mr. Price. And I just want to take just a couple of minutes, Mr. Wesson, I know you want to wrap up, but I just want to thank Maria and her entire team for putting this day together. Thank you very much. It was a real honor to celebrate you and your new role, along with Councilwoman Rodriguez the other day. So thank you for being here. I really do think this is a great opportunity to breathe new energy into the chamber and to really collaborate with this body on how we're going to be able to drive jobs and employment and higher wages into each one of our districts. So thank you very much for being here. We are friends, so anything you need for us to make easier on you, but not only that, we really do welcome you here and are really excited about the new energy. And Jerry, thank you very much for making yourself available and for the role that you play on the board. I appreciate your partnership. Thank you very much. Mr. Wesson?
Thank you. Oh, thank you, Madam President. Thank you very much. And I just wanted to get up, members, and quickly thank the chamber. But what, I want to take it just a little bit further. I want to say that we, this horseshoe in the chamber, we have been cultivating a relationship for years. And we're really beginning to see a true partnership and the fruit of our labor, and that's a good thing. I wanted to just speak a moment on this deep dive into the district that I'm blessed to represent. It has been phenomenal. It's kind of like, Mr. Sadio, analytics in sports, where you can break things down to the smallest detail and you know what batter maybe to put up then and what pitcher and what's going on here. And I do agree, Chris, that we need answers to more of the why questions. But what I would like to propose while we're here is that we have a conversation about us really partnering with you from a financial perspective and let's do a deep dive on every district in the city of Los Angeles. So I don't know if I need to introduce a motion or what have you, but I would believe that there would be enough interest on this council. And Mr. Tanner, the work that you did in the district that I represent, I really, really appreciate that. It gives me different tools and more, for lack of a better word, I'll say ammunition when I'm at a meeting with community people and they're asking me business questions or what have you. For a city of our size, it only makes sense that we invest a little and I believe that the return would be a lot. So if you would assign somebody to sit down with us, and I'll get the CLA involved, and let's come up with a way that every district can be done at the same time, let us give some input on to, into why, so that we can understand, not just show me what, but so that we can get some of the whys, because this will be, this data is invaluable. So if you're willing, and I believe that you are, why don't we just quickly try to put something together? Because I guarantee every member on this council, you will be just amazed at the data that you see. And I think a lot of that is just on the years that we've all been together and we trust each other. I want to say that maybe the first time I met Chris, I argued with him over something and I would think that there probably are a few other members that would say that. Jerry, our relationship has cultivated. I threw Ruben Gonzalez out of my office the first time I sat and met with him. But see, all of that, that, yeah. Yeah, see, that's why they make him sit in the back. He's in the last row in the back. But it's a different day now. We have a level of trust and we focused on working on the things that we agree on, which is making the city a better city. So again, thank you for everything that you've done. Jerry, I'm going to do a sidebar with you when this is over and I want to, like, tomorrow begin some kind of conversation with the CLA. What do we have to do? And, you know, what additional resources does Tanner need? I mean, let's just get it, get it going for every district. I think it would be tremendous. So members, why don't we give them a round of applause?
Thank you very much.
They deserve it.
I'm going to go ahead and move into the public cards section of our meeting, so if I can just have you guys go back to your seats. Thank you very much. I'm going to call multiple card speakers. Armando Herman, Antonia Ramirez, and Eric Previn. Herman, Antonia Ramirez, and Eric Previn. Sorry, just can you guys, Mr. Previn wants to speak. You have, you filed a card for multiple items, Mr. Previn? Items three and five and your general public comment? I'm sorry, you just, it's just item five and general public comment?
And item three. Thank you. It's Eric Previn from CD 2. I live in Studio City and I want to thank the chamber for giving such a comprehensive report. You know, it's a little long, it's a little long, but it's good that we're drilling down. And I would not say that it has re-energized the hall here, because there's almost nobody around, except for the guys they were joking with. That said, we did learn a lot. And one of the key details that we learned is, is that in CD 5, where Paul Corretts runs the show, the average wage is about $95,000. In Mr. Harris Dawson's, it's down about $25,000. So that's a significant gap. And yet our campaign finance laws that I think Bonin is championing are pretty much rolling out the same rule to access a six-to-one match. And so if you want to challenge Marquis Harris Dawson, feel free to show up at Taste of Soul, where he's going to be surrounded by the mayor and others on the weekend, and you can't, you can't raise the money. But in Corretts's district, as he pointed out on the record, it's easy to raise $25,000. Well, when you have a bunch of unemployed rich people who want to make the world better, it is easier, but it's very hard. So I would ask that you rethink those plans for your rules committee sneakily on Friday morning.
Do you have your general public comment on, Mr. Previn?
Okay, general public comment, sure. So I'll tee that up. Friday morning, they're talking, but nobody knows for sure about the big rescue that Mike Bonin is going to lower the threshold that's crushing. 75 percent of the candidates in 2017 accessed no public funding, 25 percent did, and they were all incumbents except for the ones who were like incumbents, like Caro Terosian, the planning deputy from CT 2, and, you know, others. I got that wrong, but they are very similar kinds of characters. There goes Kocorian, because he didn't want to debate me with the $44,000 public funds he took, because the debate requirement is avoidable and they have not fixed it. They've in fact added, a dream Nazarian-like coffee chat would suffice. I asked today, would this little mailer to everybody to come? And if you don't show up, that was your chance to debate your incumbent. So this is all a stack of nonsense. The optics will never fly. We're going to be very careful, Buscaino, just like you, to make it very clear for people that this will never, ever fly, that the incumbents are going to raid the $20 million in matching funds while all the other candidates get nothing. The fix is easy, kill the threshold and give them a stipend so they can play.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Thank you very much. Next speaker? Ms. Ramirez, you're speaking on item number five for a minute, and then I'm going to give you your next minute for your general public comment.
Okay. Thank you, one moment.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Public policy is simply put, status quo censorship and revisionist bullshit, who adamantly gang stalk and torture those of us who speak the truth against fraud, waste, abuse, and corruption. That's why there is no money in the city's financial coffers. And again, we are hiring too many outside organizations and committee groups that are friends of council members and we, the gang, we, the taxpayers, are forking out this money. Not you, not the financial coffers, but we are the ones that are putting the money in all the waste and abuse and fraud that is going on at City Hall. And that's got to stop. It is going to stop. So help me God, it's going to stop. We're going to utilize it and stop all these beautiful pachangas or parties and events. That's got to stop too. No money's coming in, all the money's going out. That's going to stop. God bless America and God bless Donald Trump.
Okay, Ms. Ramirez, now you're in your general public comment. One minute, go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a public health, welfare, and safety crisis that they are not addressing here. These corroded, corrupted, unethical, unpatriotic, un-American assholes, i.e. Erica Garcetti, Mike Rover-Fure, down, boy, down, Herb Censorship Winston, and many self-serving council members who are here only to illegally enrich themselves. We now have the Skid Row niggers who have merged with the La Placita and Alvera Street chango Latino wetbacks and gang bangers, the Mexican mafia, Maras Salvatrucha, 18th Street, Temple Street, Diamond String, and all the chango pendejos y panzones incorporated. Gang bangers are pigs, pussies, and thieves, and ugly, filthy, nasty pedophiles. What these niggers and chango Latino gang bangers and wetbacks need to do is stop harassing, stalking, and stop stealing, 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 stop assaulting, stop terrorizing, stop violating, and stop drug dealing, and stop attacking children and homeless women, homeless senior citizens, and homeless middle-class people, including our beloved military veterans.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Thank you very much. Your next speaker, the next speaker is Armando Herman, followed by Wayne Spindler and Rob Quad. You have two minutes on item, you've got item number five and general public comment.
So you heard the miserableism of the trend of homelessness. Two bullshit booklets that even not one councilman or any elected official in Sacramento can do anything about. You've created the eyesore through gentrification. You brought homelessness to Los Angeles and it's real. And now you're blaming homelessness on work? You're blaming it on what, growth? Well, let's ask ourselves, what voice are we as politicians? I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you are. Nothing more but dick-sucking son of a bitches that take away the privilege of the American people to survive, whether they're homeless or not. On behalf of all homelessness, fuck you. So, as you see, folks...
You want a minute of general public comment?
There is no true data here, other than the lies and the malicious, vigorous bullshit politician who says to you homelessness is not something we can fix. And we know that. So what do you plan to do about it? Not one goddamn thing, because we know that Mike Fure's office is a part of the chongos that go around suppressing homelessness, putting homelessness in encampments, and treating them like Adolf Hitler would treat your mothers, you dumb motherfuckers. So I'm not afraid to call you snickers. I'll never call you a snickers, but all you white nigger politicians know for a fact that if you can't do your goddamn job, line up behind Englander and get a big cock the way Eric Garcetti has done with Newsom from Sacramento.
Thank you very much, Mr. Herman. You're done. Next speaker is Wayne Spindler, followed by Rob Quan. Is Rob here? Somewhere, it doesn't look like he's in the room. You filed cards for item number five and general public comment.
Yeah, so go ahead.
Yes, so he looked at this fucking report, and as usual, Marquis Harris-Dawson is the worst of you fuckers. He's not creating jobs. It looks like shit in this report. There were no Asians and no black people in your fucking Chamber of Commerce in this goddamn report. It's too long, and we insisted that it be shorter. Yes, shorter like Erica Garcetti's short dick. We needed to have shorter fucking meetings like this, where we spend all this fucking time, you make the guests leave before we can address the body of this public comment shit. And that's why we sit here and we wait for what? And we noticed that Mr. Sadio was standing up, so maybe he's supporting what I'm saying? I take it? Yes, very good.
So the one minute of public comment, there was a goddamn fundraiser by Mitchell Englander the night before he announced his resignation. Everybody came, gave $800 to his office holder account. The next fucking morning, he announces his resignation. I say those people were defrauded, don't you? Because if he resigns and he's got to spend all the money by December 31st, he's fucking fundraising by false pretenses. He had two years left on his term. He says his staff will offer refunds, and his staff, using city resources, contacted these donors and told them who they are and where they can get the $800. I want the list of those donors. Those donors, the list of those donors is as big as Monica Rodriguez's fat fucking belly, and we want to know where the fucking list is.
Okay, next speaker. That concludes your general public comment. Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Let's go ahead and take up item number five. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. I have a few other speakers for general public comment. Brenda Cox, are you here? Brenda?
Coming.
Eric? Eric?
Yes, coming.
Sorred Ostrick?
Yes.
Anybody by that name? Ostrick?
Yes, coming.
William, no?
No.
That concludes general public comment. Madam Clerk, what's before us? We have item three.
Item 3A, there's a request to continue that item to November 16th, 2018.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. What's before us? Mr. Price?
I want to move forward with item 3B.
You want to move forward with item 3B?
So, just for clarification, Mr. Price, then 3B, the lien should be confirmed, and also for 3C, the lien should be received and filed in as much as the lien was paid, sir. Madam President, 3B and C needs a vote.
Okay, so let's go ahead. Those items are now before us. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And that clears the desk.
Okay.
Madam President, there are motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam President. There was an item yesterday for which we didn't receive 12 votes for an ordinance, and it might be opportune to reconsider it since we have 12 members now. It was item number 12 yesterday, which is Council File 18-0600-S157. It was reapproval of MICLA financing, and so if there were a motion to reconsider it...
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on reconsideration, members. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
See, that item is now before us. Let's go ahead and vote on that. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, what's before us now? Okay, we're going to send that item forthwith.
And just to confirm, public comment was satisfied on that yesterday.
Correct. Thank you very much. What's before us? What's next, Ms. City Clerk?
Madam President, there are motions for posting a referral, and that clears the desk.
Very much. Members, are there any announcements? Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight at 6:00 PM, Mayor Garcetti and I are doing a town hall on the proposed Bridge Housing in Venice. It'll be moderated by Alex Cohen, formerly of KPCC, now of the new 24-hour Spectrum News Channel. We, it's going to be held at the Westminster Elementary School. We've got over 1,000 RSVPs so far, so there will be an overflow room. You do need to RSVP so we can keep everything in order, and folks can do so at BridgeHomeVenice.com. And if folks don't want to come out in person, Channel 35 will be there, and we will be rebroadcasting it later. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Are there any other announcements, members? We have a very special happy birthday. We want to wish our colleague, Mitchell Farrell, we got you a little something, it's right behind you. Happy birthday, my friend. Wishing you all the best. Feliz cumpleaños al colega Mitchell Farrell. Happy birthday. I think Mr. Buscagno can probably hit a good note.
I don't know about that bitch.
Thank you. Go ahead and make a wish. Thank you very much. Happy birthday. Mr. City Attorney, you have some, another item?
Yes, we have another one, just like before. So we ought to reconsider while we're here. It was item number one from yesterday, which was Council File 08-0951-S3, which was wastewater system subordinate revenue bonds, for which we had taken public comment.
Okay, correct. Let's go ahead and open up that item for reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That item is now before us. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay. Is that it, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Fourth with on that item as well. So let's go ahead and rise for adjourned motions. Members on my left, are there any adjourned motions? Any adjourned motions to my right? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned.
I'm not just an environmentalist at work, but I am an environmentalist at heart. Seventy percent of the world's surface is covered by water. In order to see the world, you really have to be in the water. I was a scuba dive instructor and realized that I had a passion for the ocean and needed to work as a marine biologist. So when the position in water quality came up, I knew that was my job. As an environmental specialist at the Port of Los Angeles, I wear many hats. I primarily oversee stormwater quality. I am the sustainability coordinator for the Port of Los Angeles, and I oversee the management of a 15-acre endangered California leashedard nesting site. We, at the Harbor Department, ensure that the birds are as successful as they can be. My job is to go around and visit all of our tenants, from the large industrial operators to the restaurants, the municipal fish markets, and everything in between, to ensure that we have the highest quality of water entering the harbor waters. The Environmental Management Division was founded in the '70s. We were the first environmental management division in the city of Los Angeles. We now support 20 full-time staff members and an additional 30 contracted...